Nelson, you miss the old green car thing on?
Yeah. Yeah.
Nelson, you miss the old green car thing on?
Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is seven o'clock according to the clock on the desk here, and let me call to order the meeting of the Merrimack Planning Board for Tuesday, January 21st, 2020. Let me begin, as we always do, with a reminder to everyone to sign in on the clipboard. It's on the table in front of me if you're going to address the board. Make sure the microphone is turned on and close to use so the folks at home can hear you. By way of reminder, our next planning board meeting after tonight is February 4th, 2020, at 7:00 PM in this room. And let me appoint Nelson into a voting position in for Dan. And with that, Tim, we're up to planning and zoning administrators' report. What have you?
I have nothing this evening that I can report, given my relative absence from the office for the last couple of days.
Excellent. Are there any questions by members of the board for the staff? I don't see any, and so let's move on to item three on our agenda. That is RCL Realty LLC as the applicant and owner, and we're here for a conceptual discussion of amendments to a previously approved subdivision through lot mergers and lot line adjustments. The parcels are located on Elizabeth Drive and Charles Road in the R1 and R2 residential districts, tax map 3A, Lot 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 25, 26, and 27. It's case number PB 2020-3. Tim, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. This is a subdivision that was originally approved back in 1969. The board may recall, almost exactly a year ago today, the applicant was last before the board for conceptual to build out the remaining lots. As of right now, 10 of the 19 lots have been developed on this particular project. The board shared some information and expressed concerns with the layout, and the applicant did not proceed with the design that he had at that time. Since then, he has engaged Keach Nordstrom to come up with a new conceptual design. They're here tonight to get board feedback and solicit information and input from the board so that they can determine how to best move forward with this before submitting a formal application.
Thank you, Tim. Steve, thank you for being here. Please introduce yourself for the record, and I know that you and Nelson are going to reminisce about 1969 and having approved this the last time when you were both here, so.
I was in seventh grade, seven years old, rather, in 1969.
I'm not buying that story.
The, I don't think he was on the planning board yet.
I was not on the planning board. I was in town, but I wasn't on the planning board.
Seventy, seventy-one?
Yeah.
So a year later.
So you've seen this layout, well, the subdivision before, as Tim correctly stated. This is a subdivision that was approved back in 1969, recorded at Rockingham in nineteen, excuse me, at Hillsborough in 1970. The project was, the plat was entitled Normandy Estates, and.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Is this working? Yep?
It is.
This portion of Elizabeth Drive, which was the name assigned to the platted street on the original subdivision plat, from its intersection with Charles to a point approximately here, was built subsequent to the approval, and houses to the east and to the west of that have been built and have been there for many years. Beginning at the point where there was a little cul-de-sac street that was also shown on the plat called Squire's Drive, that nor the balance of Elizabeth was ever constructed. You have a copy of the concept drawings. Take a look at the topography. The reason that that's never been built is relatively obvious. The interconnecting road between the two legs of Elizabeth is Charles Road. It's a Class 6 road in the town beyond its intersection with Elizabeth. In the frontage on the piece through here is very steep. It's in excess of 12 and up to 15% in some locations. It's barely passable today. It's sort of a jeep trail. It's not maintained in the winter. And it continues on to the west to the Amherst Line in that fashion. Squire's Drive has never been constructed. The topography at the end of the terminus of Elizabeth here to the north gets very steep in this area artificially. There's been fill placed in there over the years. Most recently, at the time, a water main was extended along the existing leg of Elizabeth. Trench ledge was pla, in place there and compacted to create a bit of a turnaround where none existed for, for piles and so forth, to turn around presumably. Because of the embankment there, continuation of Elizabeth Road, Drive, as it was originally platted topographically is impossible. We looked at this quite a number of years ago, approximately 20 for a different owner and who sought to build it per plan, if you will, and we couldn't make it work with the road standards. Fast forward a decade or more, we started looking at this for Rob Lavoy, who is the present owner of the property. Rob is with us tonight. He's a Merrimack resident. January 22nd, a year ago, Brent Cole from my office appeared before you with a concept that Rob wanted to explore that would have essentially made limited improvements to Charles with a common drive coming down, taking the nine lots that exist, making it five. There was concerns. The minutes capture those concerns very nicely from a year ago, and Rob abandoned, as Tim said, that proposal. As I indicated in here, in order to extend that road in any meaningful way, we're dealing with the physics of and the definition of the term slope, rise over run. The rise is sort of a fixed dimension in here, so the only way we can lessen slope is to increase run, and that's what this proposal does. It cuts the corner and contemplates a lengthwise extension of Charles, cutting the corner of one of the lots that were platted on the original Normandy Estates plan. As a result of the loss of that land, the three lots of record to the east of the platted right-of-way would become two. Three make two, and it would afford a sufficient length to put a road that comes very close to satisfying the current subdivision regulations in terms of slope, and I'll talk about that in a moment. But I think it's important, when you look back 50, 49, or 50 years, that we didn't have subdivision regulations that had geometric design standards that you would look at when you approved a subdivision at that point in time. The current subdivision regulations, late '70s vintage, that have been improved over the years so that we've had reasonable and responsible design standards now, that we try to adapt occasionally one of these old subdivisions to. Fortunately, I think we're running out of them. But looking at this from a grade standpoint, Mark Chamberlain from my office has been able to work with the DPW to come up with vertical geometry on the, on the piece of Charles that comes very close to meeting current roadway standards. We'd have a piece in here with an 8% maximum grade is what the standards are, about a 15-foot length that would need to be 9% in order to make it work. So if this proposal that I'm presenting to you conceptually this evening comes back to you with a full application, that would be a waiver request to go to 9%, where the regulations call for a maximum of 8%, and that'd be right about in here. Moreover, as part of the reworking of this with the intention of extending Charles as a, as a Class 5 public road built to the full cross-sectional design standards of the current regulations, we would realign this, reconstruct and realign this portion of Elizabeth. Why? Because it does two things now that aren't desirable. Number one, it's not built within the right-of-way. Now, let's just start with that. And number two, it approximates a curve as you turn from Charles onto Elizabeth, and it's that curve that extends over onto a piece of privately owned land. We would correct that and rework the geometry of that so it hits the proposed extension of Charles in a way that, that actually works at square. You've got site distance, all those good things that you want to see. One of the questions that was asked, if you had a copy of the memo that DPW provided, the planning department, was what about Charles? This plan doesn't show it, but if this proposal were to advance in this current alignment or arrangement, what we would do is grade out this apron. We can't deprive public access to a Class 6 road. So we would build a, an extension of this to a gravel standard that matches what it is today so that nobody down here is deprived of access to the land. That's a, that's a statutory requirement, and we would have to do that, and we will. The rest of Charles would remain in its current condition as a Class 6 road. I'm not aware of anybody who has dependency of access to their property on that, but there may be, both in Merrimack and/or Amherst. So we, we will leave that as we found it, if you will. One of the things that was in the minutes of the conceptual hearing that occurred, good evening, Bill.
Hey, Keach, how you doing?
Good. From a year ago to moranite was the desire to have a proper turnaround here. We have provided a cul-de-sac that meets the geometric requirements of the regulations at that location. So what would all this do besides extend the road? There are a total of nine parcels that are, remain unbuilt out here. We would lose one, and that would be in this area here where we, there's three shown today and on the original plat, and because of the need to dedicate some additional right-of-way to make this geometry work and to gain the length that we need to have a reasonable road grade, those lots would get compressed so that three would become two. The geometry of these would remain largely unchanged, or would remain unchanged. We would be moving forward with the zoning board with regard to these lots here to create access without using all of the frontage that was platted at the time, simply because of the grades in the public standards and not being able to connect this with this with anywhere near close to the current design standards. It's just too much rise and not enough run. It's not the intention to ever build Squire. In fact, one of the things that Rob Price correctly pointed out in the staff memo is that this current concept that was submitted by our office on behalf of Mr. Lavoy was silent as to the disposition of this platted lot, previously platted lot over there. And in part, and that is true, but in part because of uncertainty regarding what that disposition wants to be. Obviously, Rob would figure that out before he would have us file an application with Tim's office to come back for you for anything formal. There's a couple of piece opportunities there that may exist. It may become one. It may stay as it is, and upon undedication of Squire's Drive, add a portion, all or a portion of that right-of-way to, previously platted right-of-way to that lot to create some frontage. Part of the discussion that relates to this area of the site over here will involve providing the DPW with a more suitable turnaround. They've kind of made do for 40 some odd years with what they've got out there. They were able to use bedrock that was blasted from the trench that was cut in existing Elizabeth oh dozen, 15 years ago when water, public water was laid out there, to use that material to create a more reasonable turnaround for their needs. It's still not perfect. In fact, it's a ways from perfect. So that's something that if there's any building proposed to be accessed in here that we will have to figure out and work with the DPW to correct. But, I mean, basically, the purposes of us coming in this evening with this is, you know, it's pretty much captured by the advice that you gave Rob and Brent a year ago when they were in talking with you about the other proposal. You were less than satisfied with a proposal to do something that had a private way out of fear of lack of maintenance, the grades, and all the things that frankly, I kind of see as predictable. So we looked at this from a standpoint of both pro forma and design of how close to the current standards can we make this? And I guess, as I indicated in my, outset of my presentation, we can get it about 95%. The ability to take it the rest of the way is constrained by, by physics. Any questions, folks?
Members of the board, questions?
Nelson? Well, yeah. You talked about the, I think you talked about the lot on Squire's Drive. I'm uncertain what you're, what you're really proposing there.
Well, I guess I'm not certain yet either, and that's something that Mr. Lavoy is looking at a couple of possibilities, including simply conveying it to in a butter. So the jury is out on that, but I promise you that if we come back with a plan that looks anything like this, there will be an answer to that question provided.
Okay, the other question has to do with, with Charles Road, and what's at the other end of Charles Road?
Down on the west end?
Yeah.
Amherst Line, and I think it continues a Class 6 road, at least for a short distance in that community?
Do you know that? And that's important to know, if that really is.
Well, there is a Class 6 road in that community. How far it goes and whether it connects with a Class 5, I can't tell you.
Well, I think we got to know that.
Yeah, well, that'd be, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a matter of public record.
That's all I have right now, Mr. Chairman.
Other comments or questions by members of the board?
One very minor point. You've got two Lot 14s and no Lot 13.
You noticed that? I was noticing.
Yes, I did notice.
I was afraid you'd pick up on that.
Yeah.
I knew it was either going to be you or Lynn.
He got to me first.
Anyway, behind.
All right.
Thirteen's an unlucky number. It's like the hotels. They don't put that floor in there. So 3A 15 is the one we're not really sure that could be developed, or are you going to figure that out later?
This one over here?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I think what Rob's preference would be to do, and again, we've had a lot of conversation with staff, both at Community Development and at DPW over the last several months. And we've left this piece out of the conversation simply because Rob was looking at different alternatives. Does this become part of this? Does this just go away and get added to something else? Or is it preserved as the lot of record it is for building? And if that ends up being the answer, the third, and is what we would likely do is kind of construct, as best as we can, some kind of turnaround there, recognizing that my client doesn't own or control this parcel or this parcel, and there's grades and right-of-way constraints there. But we do have the right-of-way of Squire's Drive that was dedicated years ago to work with before we hit the, you know, the end of the world here, where we get about a 15 to 20-foot drop-off, precipitous drop-off, and like a one-to-one slope, to create something there and then take the right-of-way and exit to this and create a lot with some frontage on a Class 5 road. That's probably the outcome that you, you would see. I can't guarantee that at this point, and, you know, Rob's sitting here listening, so.
That would also result in whatever the zoning board, because that would be a zoning board part of the decision.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, you need to really, so the left-hand 14, the one closest to 15, what's the plan for how is that buildable or accessed? Nope, the one, that one.
What the proposal would be is, in addition to owning the unbuilt, the nine unbuilt lots, the right-of-way of Elizabeth and Squire that's unoccupied, while there is a public dedication that occurred upon recreadation of the 1970 plat, Rob owns the land, entitled to the land within the right-of-way in feet. So unlike a dedication where, or discontinuance where the right-of-way is split between the abutting owners, it was never owned by others, and it would all come to Rob. So in here, for this lot, if this is undedicated and we use whatever portion is, is not used to create a suitable turnaround, the balance would be added to this lot or this lot. That said, the same is true on this piece of Elizabeth that's unbuilt and unoccupied between here. The intent is to take all or a portion of the width of that 50 feet, add it to each of these two lots. This Lot 14 here, which is really Lot 13, would be accessed in this manner, and then the frontage created by that undedication and consolidation of the formerly platted right-of-way to this Lot 14 would become frontage and part of 14. So that 14 would increase an area by a dimension equal to the area that was previously platted right-of-way.
Your geography will let you access it off of your new extension of Charles Road at the end of that turnaround?
Yeah, with the extent of grading that's shown on, on sheet two, I had Mark Chamberlain, who's the project engineer who's working on this, grade that out to demonstrate a driveway with a grade of not more than 10% in compliance with the current town regulations could be built there, and it, and it can be. We also did test pits on all of these lots that aren't shown on here, just to make certain. We weren't going through a lot of effort to get to a chunk of rock. And we were able to excavate favorable test pits there, which was fortunate.
So you got municipal water, but no sewer?
That's correct.
Okay. In the context of a conceptual design, I know that there are members of the board who have at times had some concerns about creating lots with little flagpole sort of appendages to reach the road frontage, and so that'll certainly be a part of a discussion if that's the way the proposal comes forward is, should that be an appropriate way?
That's understood, and before, that proposal would be in front of you for public hearing. It would certainly require necessity of a variance for, to create that geometry.
Yeah, Lot 25 has a little funny tale around the cul-de-sac, too. I don't know that I feel terribly strongly about it, but I know various discussions in the past about other proposals. That's been a discussion to wonder about those, what we've called, come to call, flag lots.
Been doing a lot of wondering about this myself. You know, you try to undo 50 years of, you know, so. You're not alone.
Yeah. Could the new Charles Road extend further to make it all the way up to the front of 3A 14? The left side, left-hand 3A 14?
Up into here?
Yeah.
Then we start to get into that grade thing as you start to bite into that steep slope. If you look at the profile that's on the third and final sheet of the design, keeping in mind that this is stationed around, we want to have the turnaround. You see, can see in there where the cul-de-sac would be. We're getting into a pretty good cut as it is, and that's one of the places that we did test pits. We don't really want to do a lot of blasting or any, if we can get avoid, avoid it because of the proximity of existing homes out here. And it's right about here where the existing topography takes off like a shot, and as you can see from the topographical survey data that's on the drawing. So we're trying to avoid that, and that was, again, one of the reasons I asked Mark to grade this out and demonstrate to me that we could get a driveway in there that had 10% that was reasonable.
Right. Well, I mean, avoiding it is really just punting it over to the landowner because it's going to be a driveway or it'll be part of a road, but one way or another, it's got to be a passable slope that.
Correct.
Everybody can find suitable. I get the idea that our driveway regulations give you 10%, and our roadway ones give you 8%, so I guess that's where the.
Yeah, and then FPA 1 is 10%, so.
Understood. Other comments or questions by members of the board? Are there specific areas of concern that you want to make sure the board's discussed in the conceptual?
I do, and that is, I kind of gave you an overview of where we ended up over the last year. Now, again, my client's here with me this evening, and he's got to make a informed decision on whether he proceeds with this project or not. Obviously, we can't ask you to, you know, predict outcome, but I will tell you, if this comes back before you, aside from any work we may need to do with ZBA before we get here, and things like what we just talked about, Mr. Chairman, in here, and I've recognized for you that with the, with the work that Mr. Chamberlain has done and designed, there is an area in here where we would need a 1% waiver on road grade. To go to 8%, which is what the regulations required. the road wanders beyond the available limits of right-of-way that my client owns or controls. So, I think what I'm representing to you is this geometry in here that you see on, on Sheet 2 and Sheet 3 is the closest we're gonna be able to get to compliance. Now, with regarding the cross-sectional geometry of the road, straight-on compliance, with regarding...
Are your stations on your road grading, is there, are they 50 feet or 100 feet apart?
Those are 100-foot stations, and then there's little tick marks at the, at the half-stations.
So, Charles Drive from where it now meets Elizabeth down to the cul-de-sac is 1,300 feet long?
From, reach that little bend in the road. From Station Zero is, is part of the existing Charles because we're reconstructing and regrading that because of that geometric issue at the intersection of Elizabeth that I spoke of.
Yep.
To correct that geometry, and from that point, stationing around the cul-de-sac in a counterclockwise manner, it takes us back to Station 1391. So, if you were to do that, I think we're building somewhere around, just under 1,200 feet of new road.
All right. So, be alert to the limitations on dead-end road lengths and whether you've gotta do a fire hydrant and satisfy those particular requirements.
Yeah, there'll be hydrants out here because we're gonna have public water.
Yeah, as long as you're alert to the issue. Other comments or questions? Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Steve, can you kinda talk to me a little bit about Map 3, Lot 17, Mr. Souders' property as it relates to Squires Drive? If you are operating off of a 69 development, that means it would have been an old 69 plan. So, the question would be, where does the edge of Mr. Souders' property end? And where does that version of Squire Drive begin? Because on your current plan, I've got tick marks surrounding Mr. Souders' property, and then you have Squire's Drive listed as unimproved, but then a solid line brings it across to suggest that Mr. Souders actually owns two Lot 14 and Lot 15. Can you clarify that for me, please?
I'm gonna trace with my finger the outline of Mr. Souders' property.
Yep.
At least within the context of the drawing. Begins here, and follows the edge of platted right-of-way along a curve to the left, then a small radius curve to the right, follows a curve to a long radius curve to the right, a short radius to the left, a short lady, radius to the former exterior property line, back in a south, easterly direction to a point that's off the drawing, and then back to the point of beginning here.
So, right now, Squires Drive is a paper street?
Correct.
Okay.
It was a dedicated by virtue, New Hampshire law of dedication at the time of recording of the Normandy Estate subdivision plan in 1970.
So, in theory, anything that comes back to us that's different could possibly absorb that portion of Squire Drive to give additional acreage to either Lot 15 or Lot 14 or whatever the, whatever your...
That would be the intent.
That would be the, that is, okay.
Yeah, so it would be the intent to petition the Town Council to undedicate or release right-of-way in Squires Drive. There's effectively, by virtue of the dedication, public dedication that occurred in 1970, is what amounts to a public easement over that land, a public interest in that land in that way. Public Works has repetitively indicated that they're not interested in seeing it built to maintain it in perpetuity for one lot, so that, you know, I mean, we don't wanna build it either, Bill.
No, I, I, based on your concern over the sloppage of terrain coming on, coming westerly back down, I can understand why you wouldn't wanna develop.
And that same request to release from public servitude, this right-of-way would include this piece as well.
So, it's, it's the arc, the arc and then the northerly part of the arc and Squires Drive?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because again, our, my client has title at fee simple interest in the land underneath. It's just encumbered by the public rights that may exist as a result of the dedication.
Right. No, that, I, I gather that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Does that help, though?
No, absolutely, no, I'm trying, I was just, yes.
All right.
It helps, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Other than providing required notice of a appointment before our board or other boards, have you had an opportunity to meet with the owners of the existing lots on Elizabeth Drive and let them know what your plans are and what their thoughts were about it?
The only one I have is to the one of Brighter Squire.
Lot 17, okay.
Mr. Souders, the, yeah.
You wanna repeat that with a microphone, just so it's on the record?
He has spoken, my client, Rob Lavoy, has spoken with the owner of...
Lot 17.
Yeah, Lot 17, Mr. Souders.
Okay. Alistair?
I read from what Robert, Robert put before us, that Public Works don't like that turnaround on Elizabeth Drive, and obviously, it's not a turnaround to any standard, I mean, you couldn't turn anything around there. Are you, does this give you a problem if we insisted there was a proper turnaround? Or is there simply no place to put it in?
Well, in the event that the proposal that Mr. Lavoy was to have us return with involves this property, we would need to gain access to that lot. The Class 5 dedication ends in about here.
Yep.
So, acceptance, somewhere in here. The, what we would likely do, because of the constraints of lack of ownership of here and here, but full ownership of everything beyond, is we would probably try to attempt to design some sort of a hatchet head or hammerhead type turnaround there that could accommodate snowplow, fire truck, that type of thing.
That's where I was.
Yeah. You know, within the realm of physics, you know? Escher can draw things, Keach can draw things that can't be built, and I don't wanna draw an Escher. You know what I mean? So, we would work with DPW to get something that would be acceptable there. I mean, that would be, we'd have to, Alistair.
Okay, thank you.
I think you're gonna prepare to remind me of that.
I will.
Could well be. Does the potential applicant own any other undeveloped property in this vicinity or abutting these lots that are developed here, or is this it?
That's all.
Okay. I would think that wanting to resolve all of the, the configuration of all of the remaining lots in a, in a potential proposal would be where the board would be at. I think if you achieve the relief from the zoning board that could be required by any of these things, and all you've got before us is the potential for a 15-foot length of a little bit 1% too steep, I don't think that you would struggle by getting that level of a waiver from us.
That's the fundamental question I wanted to have answered before we invested the time and money to proceed with this, to be honest with you.
I think our subdivision regulations would still have you put a sidewalk in somewhere in this, and so...
We would likely seek a waiver of that.
Potential for that.
Since it's Nashua before we see any other.
Yeah, and there's a nice, nice quiet area to live in. Other members of the board have any comments?
Just my same comments, Mr. Chairman. I have, I don't know where Charles Road goes, the Class 6 part of it, and where the town line is and what it services, if anything, and if it needs to have access, if it does.
One of the other hats I wear is town engineer in Amherst, so I can give you a really nice map. So, before we...
I don't know where the town line is.
It's about 650 feet west of...
If you go back a couple of pages in your packet, Nelson, the aerial photograph actually shows the town line just to the left of the plan. The lots in orange are outlined are the project in question. Then there's two lots to the left of that, and then the town line is that...
Okay, so there is a lot down in there, 3A 29-1, that's in Merrimack.
As well as 3A 64-6.
Believe there may be contiguity of ownership with a parcel in Amherst such that, that while the tax map may show it, I think it may be one piece of land for the purposes of title. Not that that matters, it is not our intent to preclude continued public use of Class 6, any portion of the Class 6 Road. You know, that's why where this embankment is shown here, Nelson?
Yeah.
On the outside of the curve, a final design would show essentially a ramp extending downward to catch grade, probably somewhere down in, about in here, so that that would remain passable in its current condition, which is virtually impassable today. A four-wheeler could go, could navigate that even a four-wheel-drive vehicle couldn't. It's basically, when I was first out here in the late 90s, you might've had a chance with a Jeep. It's overgrown.
It looks like from the aerial view, as well as the locust map on your plans, that Charles Road doesn't go into Amherst. Looks like it stops at the town line.
That's, that's only our GIS. It does not show any of Amherst's information. So, that very well could continue into Amherst.
I think it does.
I believe it does as well.
Yeah. I think it used to be a through road in the annals of history.
Excellent. Obviously, that's something that the applicant can provide a better answer for when we get to a formal application.
Just to clarify, on that aerial, those two parcels that you see, 29 and 29-1, both have access to Severance Bridge Road in Amherst.
Okay. It just doesn't show on here.
If you look at Google Maps, it shows the driveway, but it's, again, beyond our GIS in that.
What I'd likely do, Nelson, is have somebody from my office put together a composite of the two GIS tools.
Yeah, that'll make some sense.
We just don't wanna cut something off.
In fact, I bet you NRPC has already done it.
Yeah, 329 and 329-1 certainly have a ton of development on them for not being able to access any other way.
Those actually were before the board, a couple of years back, I believe, for home occupation.
Fair enough. Other comments or questions? Are there any abutters or citizens who wish to weigh in on the conceptual? Knowing, understanding that a conceptual is only that, the applicant suggesting a possibility that might come forward someday in an application. If there are no abutters that wish to weigh in, we'll close the public hearing. Steve, you mentioned that you wanted to make sure that we covered a few points for you. Did we cover all the ones of interest?
He was taking copious notes over there, you say.
Excellent. I think you got a tough piece of property, but you've come up with a reasonable solution for it as long as the ZBA would consider the relief you're after, and I wouldn't deign to offer an opinion as to what they ought to do, because I'm not a member of that.
From, from my perspective, the key is to continue to work with Public Works and staff to make sure that we're at a level to get it as close to town standard as we possibly can.
I agree with that.
I agree with that.
That, that's a good approach, and, you know, solving all the problems with fire hydrants and road lengths, and ultimately, if you're left with all of those things resolved, other than 15 feet of 9%, whereas 8% is required.
And I'm sure we'll stumble over other things, like the sidewalk piece and things of that nature, but I, I mean, the fundamental things that deal with basic road geometric design standards, that's what tonight was all about, to show you the best we could do and see what your thoughts were.
Yeah. I'd wanna see the, the couple of lots on the end incorporated into whatever it is that they're gonna be, and let's get all of that solved at once, just in case something we're deciding on now forecloses an opportunity that we would later want to know about there.
I think that's Rob's intent, it's just there's a couple of irons in the fire, and we focused on the bottom because that was the big issue, you know, from his mind. And I think, you know, the essence of what Tim's advice was just was about working with staff to see what we can do in the town departments up there and within the available right-of-way. It's gonna sort itself out one, one of three ways, and I'm not sure which way. There's always a good punt there, and that's to consolidate it into the other parcel below, right?
Yeah.
You know, if nothing else works.
I'm glad to hear that the applicant has spoken to the owner of 3A 17. I think with that Squires Drive never having been built, although the satellite seems to show there's something there, I'm sure that that individual would be interested in something being built after 50 years of thinking that it probably wouldn't be.
I think he has been a long-term owner of that property, too. I remember looking at this in the late 90s and that name being, being identical.
What's, what's sitting in the right-of-way of Squires Road that we can see on the satellite picture? It looks like there's a driveway all the way to the end of it.
Somebody cleared that years ago, and I think it was a staging area. I was told this by a guy named Dave Hetu, that worked for Patterson Construction a number of years ago, that when they, when the Water Main Extension occurred, that they used that as a staging area, the area of the public right-of-way, and took the trench blast and used it to endeavor to make the best turnaround that they could. That's hearsay, but I was told that by somebody that I, who I wanna believe.
All right. One way or another, it's been relatively recently disturbed so that the owner at least had some warning that the edge of his property may not be the edge of his property the way he thought it was.
I suspect a knowledgeable owner would know what they bought.
We sent, we tend to see a lot of subdivisions come forward where someone's experiencing some development, abutting them that they weren't expecting, so I wouldn't necessarily jump to that conclusion.
Story of my life.
Yeah, I agree. And even, sometimes even if they know, they still don't like it. Been vacant for 50 years.
That's chapter two.
All right, absolutely. So, being a conceptual discussion, no actions required by the board, and you're not necessarily on any timeline towards of submission or non-submission. That's completely up to you guys. You would have to do new notice to any abutters if you ultimately choose to do that, and it doesn't necessarily have to look like this as you come forward if you choose not to.
All right, super. Thank you for your time tonight, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and walking us through the details of it. Thank you. That moves us on to item four on agenda, which is Doreen, or Doreen Wynott as the applicant and SAD Development as the owner. This is Continued Review for Acceptance and Consideration of a Waiver of Full Site Plan Review for a Dog Daycare Training and Boarding Business. The parcel's located at 257 Daniel Webster Highway in the I-1 Industrial Aquifer Conservation District. Tax map 3D 2, Lot 36, case number Planning Board PB 2020-4, and it's continued from our January 7th meeting. Tim, what should we know before we hear from the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This parcel, although it's listed as 257 DW Highway, is probably most familiar to people here on the board and in the audience as the former Fallon's Furniture on the corner of Star and DW Highway. The proposal is to utilize the existing 6,600-square-foot structure for a dog daycare, training, and boarding business. They would also include about 3,850 square feet of a vinyl fenced-in play area to the east side of the building. The applicant, I'm sure, is going to discuss the suggestion of staff about needing a waiver for parking. There has been a request that you should have with you from Attorney Pearlman regarding that waiver request for parking. This is a request for a waiver of full site plan as well. There is some concern from DPW about pet waste runoff that I think is been relatively common with these types of businesses, as we've seen several over the last couple of years. That would be another suggested talking point for the board and the applicant tonight. Other than that, I'll let the applicant move forward with the presentation.
Thank you, Tim. Please introduce yourself and tell us what's on the proposal for us.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. My name is Andy Pearlman. I'm an attorney with Pruney and Pearlman in Nashua. With me tonight is Doreen Wynott, sitting on my left. And next to her is her daughter, Rachel, and both Merrimack residents, and both hope to open their doggy daycare and pet daycare facility. Just very briefly, Doreen is an experienced pet caretaker for, since 1990, she has been operating professional pet sitters, et cetera, in-house pet care, pet walking. She has 30 people on staff that all work remotely by phone. all work remotely by phone and internet, 3,000 clients from Nashua to Concord, a very good, solid track record, and she wants to build upon that by purchasing and then building out 257 Daniel Webster Highway for the Animal Care Center of New Hampshire, which will be the name of the, name of the business. The proposal is a, built upon a 38,000 square-foot lot. We have a 66,000 square-foot building, and we're really going to do very little to the exterior of the site, which is why we're asking for the waiver from the full site plan. There is, will be a fenced-in area toward the back of 3,800 feet, 3,850 square feet in the fenced-in area for the animals to run outside, and that's about it. Other than building improvements with respect to HVAC and fire suppression, that's all we're really going to see from changes to the exterior, exterior of the site. The rear fence will be a six-foot solid fence. We have a solid fence, so dogs can't see through, so they're not distracted by cars running, going by, or people, people parking and coming and going. The fenced-in area will be a turf material on dirt. That's going to take, takes a little bit of work. And I'll come back to the DPW comments. The operation of the facility will be 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM. At this time, we are planning out five employees total, including Doreen and her daughter. We have, will have 24/7 staff on site, because there's a boarding component to the proposal as well. The first floor of the building will be the boarding. The bottom floor will be the dog daycare facilities, because, so that they can access out to the, to the backyard. The operations, the daycare operation will run Monday through Friday. The boarding is, is, is seven days a week, and we are opening, we hope to open with the expectation that we have approximately 60 boarding kennels, actually fewer kennels, but 60 boarding animals and 60 dogs in the daycare facility. The first floor will be typical reception office. Bathroom's, has a small retail component in the corner, in the front corner windows. The boarding kennels will be there. There'll be an animal prep area for washing and drying and just getting the dogs ready to go back, go back to their owners. The lower level, as I said, will be seven pens set up of different sizes, so dogs can play together and then be herded out to the, to the backyard area and brought back in. There'll be two employees downstairs, on average, two, two to three, watching the dogs downstairs. The fenced-in area, to get into a little more detail, the fenced-in area back will have a locked gate for fire department access. Within the fenced area will be a small dumpster, like a four-by-six dumpster on wheels that we can wheel out through the gate to be serviced. The pet feces is picked up continuously, and the entire site, indoor and outdoor, are sanitized and sprayed down with a product called Wizy Wash or Wussy Wash, and it's a, it's a good product. It's ecologically friendly, approved by the EPA, and it's sprayed and applied both indoors and out throughout, throughout the facility. The dumpsters will have typical dumpster service, probably, as needed, two times a week to start, but if it's more, more, if it's less, less. And to get into the breakdown of the animals, right now, we are laying out 10 cat kennels and 38 dog kennels for the upstairs boarding facility. And again, we have seven pens downstairs for the daycare facility, and the amount of dogs will fluctuate over time. During school vacations, we're going to have more boarding. We might go over 60. During regular school year or summer, you may get more daycare dogs than, than boarding. So, that, that just moves up and down over time. We are requesting, we have two waivers before the board tonight. The first was the full site plan waiver I mentioned moments ago. Again, we're trying to keep our costs down since we're trying, since we're really doing very little to the exterior of the building. We, you have that with our initial application. You have that waiver request to the board. Secondly, I submitted a waiver request. You should have that with your packet. The waiver request is for a waiver of eight parking spaces and to allow a maximum of 120 animals at the site. And we make that waiver request. Mr. Chairman, if you, if you want me to get into that at the moment.
Hold on that until we've dealt with completeness, and then we're ready to take up that kind of question.
Thank you.
Are there, does the board members have any questions that would relate to the question of completeness of the application? If not, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept. We have enough information to deliberate on this matter.
Seconded.
Motion and second to find the application complete. If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? So, that is 7-0-0 to find the application complete. Does the board have any questions about the applicant's request to waive full site plan review? If not, what's the will of the board with respect to the waiver of full site plan review?
Mr. Chairman, based on what we've heard, there is little or no reason why we should find it a problem on the basis that, oh, I can't look at the page, we accept the waiver of full site plan that since strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and the waiver is not contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations.
Is there a second for Alister's motion? Second by Counsel Boyd. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, that's also 7-0-0. Does the board have any questions or discussion about the parking waiver request? Nelson?
Oh, no, I have no question. I think I understand the request. I guess I'd like a little more information on expected, whether this request, the requested number of spaces is going to be sufficient, and I'd like some information on that, but that's something you can provide as you go here.
Sure. It seems, by my understanding of the waiver request and the information is that they comply with our regulations if they had 80 dogs, and they want to have more than 80 by 40 more, 120, or at least potentially so. And my, my sense on the parking waiver piece of it is that that is likely to be something that's manageable based on some of the other facilities that we have around town. It does strike me that my memory is 120 or, or even 80 dogs would make this large compared to some of our other facilities, which are more like 50 or 30 dogs.
It's not that much bigger than I think what Super Dogs can handle. I think Super Dogs handles more than you think.
No doubt, and they've got, obviously, a very new facility that was custom-built for what they were. I thought that the approval of them was, had some dog numbers that were a little bit lower, and also Cloud Nine on.
Now, Cloud Nine is significantly smaller.
Yeah. So, it's certainly a big dog daycare, and ultimately, I don't know that that's necessarily a question for us to consider, whether there's some appropriate number of staff.
Ultimately, I think it's the board's comfort level with the, the type of parking that you see with these types of facilities, being high turnover, relative short duration, whether or not you're comfortable with the waiver request as presented.
I would like to hear that the applicant is comfortable with it, thinks he can still do his business and keep his cars off of Star Drive and, and Ruth.
Three.
Mr. Chairman, if I could speak to that?
Yes, please.
We are comfortable, and, and in fact, Mr. Disco, I would tell you that we are so comfortable that I anticipate coming back to you a year after being open and asking for more.
More dogs?
Yeah, because we don't, we, last thing we want is backup on Daniel Webster or Star getting in and out of the site. What we find and what we've studied from what Doreen knows and what we've studied from other sites is that the drop-off periods for, well, let me, let me, let me back up. I was, I was going to say to the doggy daycare, but before I get to that, the drop-off periods of boarding is spread out over the entire day, because if my plane leaves at 3:00 in the afternoon, I'm going to be at the doggy daycare at 10:00, all right? So, there's no, there's no real set time for the boarding daycare, boarding drop-off or pickup. The daycare pickup is typically spread out over a two-, three-hour window in the morning and the evening, say 6:00 to 9:00, 4:00 to 7:00, and the interactions are very quick. The scheduling is all done online, and the customers have to let us know approximate pickup time, so we can stagger. And so, we, we know that the, the employee's going to park to the side, so all the front parking is going to be just for customers, and we expect just a continuous flow, just to come in and out. We don't expect any traffic tie-ups. There may be an occasional, like someone has to wait for a spot, but if it does, it's going to be a 30-second wait or, you know, one-minute wait. The in and out is quick. Inside with the reception, the folks know when they're coming, so we're confident that it's going to work for our business.
That's what I wanted to be sure.
Thank you for the question. Nelson, other discussion on the parking waiver? Since the parking waiver is more substantive than the waiver of full site plan review, let's open up the floor for any public input before we take a vote on that particular waiver. Does the board have any general questions about the application in, in total? I think the, the staff's memorandum that raises the question of dealing with the potential runoff from animal waste, and the idea that you've got a dumpster and you're continually cleaning it up, helps with the feces. The urine, I assume, is going to be washed off of the edge of the property. Is there any drainage structure that that would flow into, or is that going off the side of the property to the neighbors, or how would that work?
There's going to be underground infiltration. We have, Steve Keach mentioned Brent Cole used to work for him. He now works for his own company. We have Brent Cole and Jeff Merritt of Granite Engineering taking a look at the, the drainage issue. The DPW wanted the catch basin in the rear parking lot covered solid, so we have to treat, we have to infiltrate, and they're looking at that. We're going to satisfy the DPW with respect to the treatment.
So, ultimately, when that gets designed, that'll have to show up on a plan that gets reviewed, at least by DPW, and if DPW recommends peer review as a basis, I don't think they would, but if they do, you would be stuck going through peer review and satisfying whatever comes back out of that.
Understood. Brent Cole has already talked to Dawn. They don't think it's going to be much of a system that they have to design and get approved, but that's part of the process. So, we will have a plan, ultimately. It's not, it's not going to be a full site plan, but we will have a plan to show at least the drainage component.
And staff's comfortable with that being covered by Condition 6 for the Public Works comments?
Are ordinary regulations restrict you from running any rainwater or, I guess, in this sense, processed water off your property onto the neighbors in any concentration greater than what occurs today? And so, we want to make sure that the DPW is satisfied that you've achieved that.
What was driving that was, actually, there's a, there's a brook just immediately north of our site, and Dawn was explaining to me how her life has become subject to federal guidelines of the Merrimack River, which she's not a fan of.
No question. We just want to make sure you're not making Dawn's life worse.
No, we, no, we understand, Mr. Chairman.
Bit of a proposal. There, when you go through the planning board review process and you talk to us about what your plans are, those things ultimately become conditions of approval, or at least they're things discussed with the planning board that you're obligated to continue doing. That's, obviously, the enforcement of that is subject to someone noticing a violation and making a report of it, but we'd expect that that would continue going forward. It still seems to me that 100, 120 dogs in the facility is an awful lot of dogs, but I don't think that there's any part of our planning board regulations that touch that kind of a volume, other than the parking and the traffic. What's the lighting situation on the site?
I was there today. There's front door lighting. I can't describe it specifically, but there is lighting at the front entrance. There is a down-facing light at the, in the back of the property, there's a garage door, and then there's a regular door right next to it, and there's a down-facing, I forget what you call it, the lights above a doorway just shooting, and it covers the, it appears to cover the back parking lot.
So, the dog, the vinyl fenced dog play area will be lit by whatever's existing there today, and there is something there that would light it at least somewhat?
Yes.
And not adding any lighting?
No plans to right now.
Do you want to have some discussion about lighting while we're here? Because otherwise, you're back for planning board review by, for adding a light, or, and I don't know if that's necessarily where you want to be, just to add a light.
Well, I, I imagine, Mr. Chairman, that we would perhaps add a condition to the plan, that we, we would, you know, have exterior lighting compliant with the lighting regulations, you know, subject to, subject to staff approval. When, if we are adding any lighting, it won't be much, but likewise, I would hate to have to come back to add a.
My point exactly. Tim, are you comfortable with that kind of review by staff?
Yes.
Okay. Alister?
When you were talking about the drop-off and whatever for the, both the boarding and for the daycare, you just didn't quite mention that you're also wanting to sell pet care products. Does that going to change the amount of parking space? I mean, are you just assuming that the only people who are going to buy pet care products are those who are dropping off their dogs or boarding their dogs, or are you expecting that everybody's going to come and buy their dog care products from you instead of whatever that company that sells them on the, on the TV where you can have it delivered for nothing?
It is a service to the customers, that it's there for their convenience, and we don't expect a lot of walk-in traffic for the retail component. The retail component is, is going to be very small, 100 square feet or so, and it's really there just for, you know, brushes or leashes or collars, just for the convenience of the customer. I don't understand retail these days. People just get killed with Amazon, so, but it's, we don't expect a lot of traffic, traffic other than the customers.
Thank you.
It says that you're also going to be using the, the business for training, and I was just curious, the training, is that going to, that's going to take place during the day and kind of have an overlap with the boarding and the doggy daycare? So, during that operation of the business, you're going to have to have parking for those people, for the people coming in to bring their dogs. How do you foresee that being?
Let me have Doreen Why Not speak to that, please.
Thank you for coming forward. Go through the process of signing in on the clipboard, and then when you're ready, introduce yourself first, even though we just did introduce you.
Hi, I'm Doreen Why Not.
Can you pull your microphone a lot closer to you, and then make sure it's on that, that green light's really bright when it's on, so if it's any, yeah, if you've got to put your hands on it, it's not on. Touch the push.
Ah, now it's on. Hi, I'm Doreen Why Not, and to answer your question about training, generally, training is about an hour, and it's usually done at night after daycare.
Would you be training in the outdoor vinyl fenced area or inside the building, or would you be using part of your parking lot?
Inside.
Okay. I think it's important, given that the request to have a reduced amount of parking, that you not use your parking lot for those kinds of activities.
Correct. It would be unsafe.
Yeah. Well, I, I've seen a lot of places do it, and they manage to put out some cones and block it off, but you need a lot of extra parking, because it just is going to, you know, take up eight, 10 spaces to do it.
Sure. If we were going to do that outside, it would have to be in a fenced-in area.
Would you do, like, group training or one-on-one, or?
Both.
Are you training the dog? Are you training the owner as well?
It's always best to train the owner. The dog is easy.
That was my thought as well. Dogs are smart people, not so much.
But they can't drive, which is why we're asking for the waiver.
There you go.
Dogs don't need any parking spaces for their cars. So, the, there's driveway access to the site from both DW Highway and Star Drive?
Yes.
Is there any pavement markings that show traffic?
Let me, let me speak to that for one second. The original plans, the plans that we submitted from the old furniture store, show. The original plans, the plans that we submitted from the old furniture store showed the, there was an exit only onto Daniel Webster Highway, and it showed a do not enter and a one-way sign, which are not there today, so we would have to reinstall those.
Okay, so there is a driveway on DW Highway that should be one way and do not enter, but isn't marked that way?
Correct.
And you'd complete those markings as a part of this?
Yes.
And then the, the usual two-way entrance is off of Star Drive?
Correct.
Alistair, you seem to raise an eyebrow.
Well, I saw it, I saw it, the one off Daniel Webster Highway worked, worked both ways, cause I've seen people do both ways, but I'm, I'm glad to hear they're gonna make it one way only.
It's pretty, it's pretty thin.
It's narrow, but I've seen trucks come on and off.
Oh, I'm sure.
All right, fair enough.
Is that your intention for traffic flows, that people are gonna go out that way as a general matter, or is just let people do whatever they happen to?
We would prefer the, the better traffic turning movements are coming off of Star and then from Star onto Daniel Webster. So that would be preferred. People will be using that as an exit.
If they're turning right on DW Highway, that would probably work okay. If they're gonna go left, they should do that off Star Drive, I would think, or not do that. Other comments or questions by members of the board? Are there any butters or citizens who wish to weigh in on the proposal, including the potential parking space waiver? Seeing none, we'll close that public hearing. If the board doesn't have any further discussion, let's take up a motion and potential.
I've got one comment. You, you mentioned the size of this, and I have to say, we've sat here. When you're talking about the size of this facility, we've sat here through numerous proposals. Occasionally they've gone through, but a lot of them haven't, for a lot smaller facilities in a lot less appropriate places. I think this is a good location. You don't have a lot of residential around there. You don't have a lot of other things that can be disturbed by barking dogs. I think this is an appro, I'd, I'd much rather see two or three large facilities like this in town than six or eight of these small ones that aren't anywhere near as appropriate.
I think the, the size is one factor, and you've correctly pointed out the location where you're not near a bunch of residential. Without naming names, some of our facilities do a great job of managing dog barking, and one or two of our facilities seem to have dogs that you can hear from nearby establishments. And again, it doesn't necessarily tighten into any of our regulations if there's no residential around this. Hopefully, you've got some good, good plans for how you manage dog barking and making sure it's not bothering anybody. I think your own customer service would drive that, because if people feel like the dogs aren't being cared for and they're barking like crazy, they're not gonna bring you any more dogs. What's the will of the board with respect to the waiver of parking to allow, what is it, 16 instead of 22?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept the waiver of reduction of the parking spaces on the basis that the specific circumstances indicate the waiver will still carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion? Nelson, I saw Nelson. I was over here looking to the right. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? So that's a 7-0-0 vote to grant the parking waiver. The board can either now discuss any further details of the application or consider a final disposition of it.
Just one note before somebody makes a motion on conditional approval. I assume the board would like to add the condition regarding lighting than any proposed do lighting to be reviewed and approved by the community development department staff.
Right.
And I assume one of your notes already covers the potential drainage plan that they're talking about?
That's, that's covered by item six, the public works comments.
Excellent. So yes, I, I would like to see that condition.
I have one more thing. Mr. Chairman, the applicant mentioned a particular type of washing material that they were using on the dogs, and I'm not familiar with it at all. Is somebody from the town looking at that? Is that an okay stuff for us to be approving here?
The waste, that, that would be something Public Works would make sure is part of their approval, yes.
Can we make sure it is, it's in the conditions? I just want them to look. Somebody to look at it, who knows what it is. Thank you.
I'm sure if it's gonna be unsavory, it'll kill the dog first, but never mind.
Well, not necessarily.
Let's try not to kill anything that we didn't wanna kill. It's, it's an appropriate question to take a look at what the chemical is that's gonna be applied. Okay, any other comments or questions? What's the will of the board with respect to final disposition of the application?
I'd like to make a motion. We vote to accept this application as it's complete.
We did that already.
Based on what we've done that, we vote, we accept the application as, that we let it go ahead subject to the conditions of the notes prepared by Casey Wolf on January 16th, 2020, and including the comment made here by Tim Thompson that we allow any changes of lighting to be subject to verification by the staff.
Is there a second to Alistair's motion for conditional final approval? Second by Bill. Comment?
I was gonna second, but did you vote on the waiver?
Yes.
Yes, we did.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You're granted.
You're granted. Granted everything.
All right, so Counselor Boyd seconded the motion for conditional final approval, subject to the conditions in the memo plus the one added here tonight. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? 7-0-0 to grant that.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. It seems to be a high demand business. There's lots of cars coming and going from the other facilities we have. Okay, that brings us to item five on our agenda, which is consideration of adoption of the Route 3 Bicycle Pedestrian Plan prepared by National Regional Planning Commission. Tim, you wanna introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you recall, I last brought this before you in late October for initial discussion as to how we wanted to move forward with this. At that meeting, the board determined that we preferred to have this handled as an amendment to the 2013 master plan. So what we have here tonight is the final product that was prepared by the National Regional Planning Commission through working with the planning board as a result of many months of information gathering, work behind the scenes, surveying at town election last year or the year before. So a fair amount of data collection and work has been done on this. Just wanted to bring back to the perspective as to where this started. This really is a direct result of what effectively has been a prohibition by DOT on any pedestrian improvements along the state-controlled portions of Daniel Webster Highway. And this adoption of the plan is key for the planning board and town council to be able to make and require developers to make improvements to pedestrian facilities outside of the urban compact, which is the area north of Bedford Road and the area south of Hurley Street. Pedestrian and sidewalk improvements were the primary focus of the town's efforts. Bicycle improvements have been included in this plan, but those have really been, I think, and the board, I think, would share that my perspective, that those are really secondary to the pedestrian improvements and recommendations of this plan. But ultimately, it made sense in the terms of consolidating efforts to do both at the same time. So what we wanna do here tonight is solicit public feedback and then make a determination whether or not to amend the 2013 master plan to include this as an appendix. Before I do that, I did get a message and request from Counselor Boyd earlier today about whether or not we've ever adopted amendments to the master plan in Merrimack. And actually, this master plan has been amended. It was originally adopted in October of 2013, and it was amended by the board in January of 2014. I'm actually gonna give you a copy. This is all the different amendments that were completed at that January meeting.
Thank you, Tim, for that introduction, and I don't know if this is the original DOT letter that raised the issue about sidewalks and state control, but it's in the package you sent, and it's dated November 22nd, 2013. And then here we are now, seven, six and a half years later. Amazing how slowly the wheels grind, huh? I'm glad that we've finally gotten to the point of being able to make some decisions on some of this stuff. Does the board have any discussion regarding what's been presented? And we've had various opportunities over the years to review it and consider it. Nelson?
Well, I'd just like to add a couple of comments to what Tim just said about it. And that is that having a master plan in place or having a, a plan like this in place is a big help when we come to apply for funds from other sources, such as TAP grants or other state and federal money. If it's in your own, the first thing they look to see if it's in your own town plans. And when it's in our master plan, this helps us in getting awards. So I think it's another reason to adopt this as part of the master plan and, and going forward. I just wanna get that on the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Nelson. I wanna make a similar comment about the process and some of the things that we've learned through this. As he's, as I mentioned, this has been going on since 2013, and there's been a lot of studies and a lot of surveys and a lot of educational information provided by NRPC. And throughout it, probably the greatest fundamental assumption we started out with that's proven to be absolutely incorrect is this idea that when you build sidewalks and pedestrian ways, somehow that's the beginning point when bikes and pedestrians show up. And it isn't. The pedestrians are already there. The bikes are already there. Right now, they're interfering with the car traffic or they're walking in the road because that's what we've got. And once you sort of understand that accommodating the traffic that exists is a necessary requirement for the safety of this, that you're not creating new sidewalks and bike lanes to cause there to be pedestrian traffic that didn't already exist, it makes a lot of sense to adopt a comprehensive plan on that basis, in my view. We've seen so many bits of data from reports about pedestrian and bicycle versus automobile accidents through the corridor, and those things have been catalogued and counted and written about in the Nashville Telegraph. And those things are well-known. This isn't necessarily, as we all know, but just for the benefit of the public, this isn't necessarily marching orders. It says we're gonna start building any of this tomorrow. This is like any other element of the master plan. It's a, a planning guidance document that helps us know what we would do when there were some opportunities to do it. I'm glad to have finally gotten to this point. Other members of the board with comments? I know that we've got some butters and citizens who are interested in sharing their information with us. And so let me open up the floor to anyone who would like to come forward and provide the board with some information to consider. Excellent. Okay, so before you start, you gotta make sure you sign in on the clipboard and introduce yourself. And you gotta use a microphone when you talk. We've got two on the table and you got one portable one over there, and you can do whatever works for you. Um, whichever way you guys wanna do it, however you wanna do your presentation, be comfortable. We're not gonna bite. We don't scare you. Take your time to get organized the way that you wanna be.
You've already had a good rollout anyway by putting it out on the Merrimack Forum, so I knew you'd be here tonight. I think we all did, so.
I don't, I didn't see the forum, but I knew that they were coming anyway. I'm so glad.
Yeah, I was excited.
All right, got enough chairs for everybody. How about that? No, please sit down. Take the spot. Okay, so now pull a microphone up. Whoever's gonna speak, introduce yourself and make whatever presentation you'd like.
Sorry. My name is Lexi.
My name is Jeffrey.
I'm John.
And I'm Connor.
I am Connor.
Lexi, Jeffrey, John and Connor. Excellent.
We're doing a school project on the lack of sidewalks in Merrimack and how it has affected citizens and potential solutions. I've posted on the Merrimack Forum about this, and I got a lot of positive feedback. The areas we were considering paving would be the area near the Homestead Apartment Complex to the library and areas from the middle school down Babusak Road. Particularly the one about Babusak Road got a lot of positive feedback on the Merrimack Forum with people who really wanted to see that, to allow their children to be able to walk safely to the middle school where they had forbid them previously for fears for their safety.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, I think the middle school area was one of the larger concerns because it's helping people get to school safely, and it's an area where there aren't really many sidewalks currently.
And it is also like a way to connect like that side of town to the center of town around here, like the high school, the upper elementary school, town hall and lots of other buildings, like especially down through the rest of town, like it's kinda blocked off.
Excellent. So let me start from start. Thank you guys for being here. I love it when you're engaged and you, you thought enough of this that you thought it was important, you wanted to come out. What brought this to your attention?
We're doing a school project for civics. Part of our midterm is that we need to find a problem that like affects our community and to come up with a workable solution and present it.
Excellent.
So it was sort of the catalyst, and then we started researching and.
Where did you research?
So we researched how sidewalks affect similar communities. And then we had to reach out to someone in the community in order to receive sort of an interview, and that gave me the idea to post on the forum to see how people who are living in this community feel about the idea of sidewalks, whether they're in support of it, what the concerns are.
What did your research tell you about other similar communities and how the sidewalks affected them?
Well, I learned that walkability is a factor that really affects property values because people are really interested, especially older people, in living in an area where they feel like it's safe to be able to walk and to allow their children to walk. And I found that installing sidewalks is an expensive proposition, but that through the raising of the property values, it kind of makes the community nicer and more valuable.
How about you, gentlemen? What'd you learn in your research? Anything you wanna add? I don't wanna put you on the spot and make you uncomfortable, James. I just wanna.
So no one ever replied to me?
It's okay, you tried.
I just found how, without a sidewalk, what a negative impact that is in an area and how many accidents there are related with pedestrians and how fatal those can be.
Yeah, awesome. We also learned about walkability as we started down this path from 2013 on. I never heard of it before then either. But I learned not only about walkability, but that there's this concept where you can score the walkability. You get a walk score. There's a website. You can put in any address you want, and it'll give you the walks, the walkability score for that area. Did you find the same thing?
Yes, I found a website that referenced the idea of walkability and how they found like a tangible measure of how walkable a community was and how depending on the area that affected like property values, like, you know, especially in cities or areas where there's an urban center.
I was fascinated by that information because it showed that when they came up with a walk score, it was based on the proximity to certain amenities like a park or a restaurant or a library or a pharmacy or, or a dry cleaner. Grocery store, yep. And when I was playing with their website, you know what the most walkable place, spot in the whole town is with the best score? It's not really a great score, but our best score that I could find? Any guesses?
I would say probably maybe this area, sort of?
Pretty close. It's right out in front of the library on Babusak, like, I mean, on Daniel Webster Highway. The little narrow sidewalk right next to the road was our best walk score. I think it was at 68 or 64 or something like that, which is not that great, but it's the best we got, so. What do you got on your posters?
Oh, I have a map of the crash sites with pedestrians. I have, this is a plan along the high school area to add more sidewalks. So that was like the existing policy, so then this would be adding to that so that we're making Merrimack more walkable in general. So this is a good policy, but then our policy would be expanding upon that in different areas. And this is like the scope of the problem, what I found through my interviewing. These are the resources, the concerns that I found in the community that things people worried about, like the placement of mailboxes and how that would be affected, and whether the sidewalks would be intruding on private property and the exist, and the existing policies like the sidewalks near Ogara Drive. Cause there weren't any really existing policies about the areas we were thinking about painting.
Yeah, I live near the middle school as well. Actually, the stretch of Babusak Lake Road from Madeline Bennett. Actually, the stretch of Babusak Lake Road from Madeline Bennett to Daniel Webster Highway has lots of chunks with sidewalks, but they're just disjointed. They just don't quite close the gap.
And then you have to walk on someone's lawn or on the road, and then...
Do you walk that area? Is that how you get to school?
No, not usually. But I have an area like that by my house, too, so it's just like not useful, really.
A little bit to close the gap. We took, several of us sat during the elections and took surveys of what the citizens thought were the most important places to put sidewalks. And that was one of the questions, was that particular area of Madeline Bennett along from basically the high school complex out to the middle school complex. And that was one of the highest rated areas for improvement. Tim?
Did you have something, Calzal?
I was pointing to...
Okay. Just, I know that it probably was late in your research. Did you have a chance to look through the plan that is being considered here tonight? And did you find any of that useful in your work?
Yeah, I actually looked a lot at the current plan, and it related a lot with what we're doing along the DW Highway. So I found that very interesting, and all of the crash statistics were mainly where we were putting it along the DW Highway. So that was very helpful.
Part of our plan is also dealing with bicycles in addition to pedestrian traffic. Did that enter into your consideration or research at all? Were you thinking bicycles, too, or just walking?
So originally, we were considering like bike lanes, but we ended up factoring them out because like we found they wouldn't be as useful as the sidewalks would be.
So sidewalks were a higher priority, what you found?
How did you arrive at that determination?
Just looking at other towns like Nashua and other places, it wasn't as much of a priority for them. So we figured a similar place would have the same...
Yeah, okay. As you go through the concept of walkability, we studied all sorts of different aspects of it, from people who walk for exercise to people who walk to go to a place, people walk when you have to, people who walk to walk a dog. And with bicycles, it's the same thing. Sometimes it's for exercise, and the contiguous long stretches of somewhere to ride a bike is important. And some people are trying to get from A to B, and they don't care about anything other than can I make it to wherever I want to go? Ended up being a real complex puzzle for us as we thought through it. You have any questions about the plan that we have proposed? I don't think we have any more questions for you guys, but thank you so much for coming out and doing the presentation. Oh, Nelson, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off.
Yeah, I'd like to know what grade are you guys in? What, you're in middle school?
We're in high school. We're sophomores in the Merrimack High School.
Sophomore in Merrimack High, thank you. And what's your teacher's name? What's your course?
Mr. Knight.
Knight?
It's a civics class.
Civics, yeah. Okay, thank you. I think he should, he should get some credit.
I don't even know if I remember taking civics in high school. I'm not that old, but I don't remember. But I'm glad to see you engaged.
I'm sure it'll come as no surprise, Mr. Chairman. I took it freshman year and did very well at it. And I still remember Mr. Day as my teacher. He was dynamite, so.
Mr. Day and Mr. Knight.
Mr. Day and Mr. Knight, that's correct. That's correct.
I also was a freshman civics student at Concord High School, and my civics teacher is now one of the media professionals at the library who I just reconnected with because my student is a, my son is a freshman at the high school now. So 30 years later, I actually got reintroduced to her.
Yeah, I went to high school in Georgia, and they just called it social studies and lumped it all in.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, Town Council is going to be deciding our budget on the...
The 29th is the finalization.
Thank you. I just wanted to get my date straight. We will be taking public testimony on the 29th. I can tell you for certainty that the Town Council is considering allocating $200,000 from fund balance, which means we've saved for this. We've basically have saved a rainy day. The Town Manager is allocating $200,000 to put towards sidewalks. I actually would love for you to come to the budget hearing and actually weigh in and say, please approve the $200,000 for sidewalks. Because to me, it would be a nice capstone to your particular project that you actually went to the legislative body that is responsible for making the type of quote-unquote monetary decisions that are needed to be able to install sidewalks. So that's one particular thing. The other thing to take into consideration is that the Department of Public Works came to us at the last meeting, and Mr. Milnes will be very happy to know that the Town Council conceptually has, is considering, well, honestly, I could say we've given the DPW the go-ahead for a roundabout at the junction at Babusak Lake Road and Turkey Hill Road. He's going to faint over here. He's going to faint over here. Part of that concept also is going to include sidewalks along with the Babusak Lake portion, because we're going to create some, obviously, we'll create some traffic calming at that particular area, but we're going to begin to gradually, you know, move the sidewalks westward from the town center towards the middle school. And then lastly, the state, 2022, they're doing the widening? They're going to be ripping up the Babusak Lake Road Bridge. They're going to be rebuilding that. They're going to make it a little bit bigger. It's going to be a little bit more longer. And sidewalks are going to be a part of, they're going to remove the old sidewalks from there and put in some new sidewalks for that particular project as well. So there are things that are going on in the community that I think what you're talking about and what your research is, is absolutely timely. But I think it would even be more timely if Dad in the back row would be more than willing to...
I think he's putting it on his calendar right now.
He's putting it to Sherpa, to Sherpa your young kids.
That's a six o'clock meeting, correct?
It's a six o'clock meeting, Wednesday night, the 29th. Just come and testify and say you want the Town Council to support sidewalks in the community. And I think it'll go a long way, and quite honestly, I would really be thrilled to have you folks there. Really would.
It's right here in this room.
Right in this room, so you know, you don't have to go, you don't have to go searching for it, so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you for those comments. Thank you, guys, so much for coming out. We really appreciate it. I like the engagement in whatever's important in the town, whether it's sidewalks or anything else that interests you. Getting off the couch, thinking, doing a little research, coming here and giving us a report on what's on your mind is just fantastic engagement. It'll serve you well as you go through life as a citizen in any town wherever it is, to tune into those local issues and be a part of those decision-making. It's really not that complicated. There's not a million people in here with voices. You just get in line and get to have your say. Do you have any more questions from us? Tell your teacher to give you an A. We said so.
No, 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 come on. A plus.
There you go. Yeah, well, that's not shortchanging. You can have the plus, too.
Especially as this week is their mock finals, they definitely need the extra qualification.
There you go. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Are there any other butters or citizens who wish to weigh in on the sidewalk and pedestrian plan? The bicycle and pedestrian plan? Come on forward and take a second to sign in. We'll rearrange some chairs a little bit. And then when everybody's set, tell us what's on your mind.
Oh, he's talking to, he's still talking to the bicycle plan.
Yeah. Guys, leave quietly, please, because the meeting's continuing.
Yeah, please. Thank you. I'm thankful you used big type, because I'm old and I can't see good. I do that with my own stuff. Make it big.
Ben Niles, loving friend with drive in Merrimack. Just so you know, I'm, you know, I'm raising a lot of issues here, but I do support the concept of the sidewalks, particularly around the center of town, our villages, and around the schools, okay? Although I don't support building sidewalks from the Nashua Line to the Bedford Line. If that's the plan, which the State Department of Transportation, I think, wants us to do, let them pay for it, okay? Now, I've read the National Regional Planning Commission's transportation or highway plan probably 10 or 15 times. I've researched the State Department of Transportation website. I've researched the National Highway Administration website, as well as some other industry and independent websites. So I feel as though, while I'm not a traffic engineer, I've done a lot of homework and invested a lot of time in this, and that's what brings me to you today and these remarks. The New Hampshire Department of Transportation received the Merrimack DW Highway Bicycle Pedestrian Plan, but has not responded. We need to meet with the New Hampshire Department of Transportation for their feedback. Number two, the New Hampshire Regional Planning Commission states on page seven of the plan, quote, "This document strongly recommends that the best practices always be followed." The plan fails this in three critical areas. One, the lane width for motor vehicles is being reduced to 10 feet due to lack of additional right-of-way. 10-foot lane widths will only accommodate truck widths of nine feet plus mirrors, leaving no space on either side. The driver would have to drive straight as an arrow within the lane, which is very hard to do. The federal standard for lane width is 11 to 12 feet. Number two, the eight-foot bidirectional bimodal side path is planned for one-sided Route 3 corridor. The Federal Highway Administration's standard for bike lanes is five feet from the curb. Bike lanes should always be located on both sides of the roads on two-way roads. Two-way bike lanes on one side of two-way streets creates hazardous conditions for bicyclists and are not recommended. And three, a bimodal, combined bike and pedestrian path or lane is also not recommended. Bike lanes should be separated from pedestrian sidewalks. Route 3 is simply too narrow to safely add bike lanes to each side of the DW Highway in Merrimack. And we shouldn't be building an insufficient or flawed plan trying to force it to fit when there's not enough space. Three, National Regional Planning Commission conducted a level stress test analysis. Due to the speed of the traffic on Route 3, the plan recommends traffic calming treatments such as speed tables and/or raised crosswalks to reduce speeds on Route 3. Page five of the plan proposes target speed achieved by the proposed road design should be 20 miles an hour for the safety of bicyclists. Best practices to achieve the 20 mile per hour traffic speed according to industry standards would require placing traffic calming treatments every 300 to 600 yards along Route 3, and will turn entire DW Highway in Merrimack into a school zone. Merrimack's traffic congestion will go from bad to intolerable. Four, the Planning Board conducted a survey on April 10th, 2018. Of 3,000 voters, 239 completed the survey with 195 voters supporting the addition of bike pedestrian lanes. This was an uninformed, feel-good survey with no details provided of the plan's pros and cons, nor the total cost, and who will pay for it. With addition, number five, addition of vertical granite curbs along all sidewalks, the New Hampshire Department of Transportation in their 11/22/13 letter recommends a drainage system to carry runoff away from the roadbed. Will this require relocation of underground and above-ground utilities, and at what additional cost? We need an engineering study done. Six, the plan adds three new crosswalks and upgrades and four crosswalks that will further slow traffic. No resident will want to drive down DW Highway in our town. And crosswalk illumination for the safety of pedestrians is also not addressed. It's not just having streetlights near or by the crosswalk. It's having it properly illuminated so the drivers approaching the crosswalk can see the pedestrians in the crosswalk from the direction in which the driver is traveling. The 2009 master plan has a transportation section with a communication plan dated 11/12/09 detailing outreach materials and methods for the board, elected officials, and the general public. I do not recall personally ever seeing these materials detailing the bike pedestrian transportation plan. A plan of this magnitude should be presented in detail to the voters at our annual meeting for approval before the town adopts the plan. However, this plan first needs a major redo due to all these flaws. Where is the cost-benefit analysis, and how will the plan be funded? What is the annual cost for maintenance repairs of these improvements? Should Merrimack taxpayers pay for a project of this magnitude that may only benefit 5% to 10% of our residents? That's what the number would work out in the first three years. Given the limited roadway within the Route 3 corridor, we should first stop and conduct a feasibility study based on best practices. The proposed roadside bidirectional multipath use or lane falls well short of best practices. Page seven of the plan states that engineering of specific improvements along the corridor is beyond the scope of the corridor plan. With the number of driveway cuts and intersections in Route 3 corridor, this plan will be very complex and costly to implement following best practices. When will the engineering study be completed? Eleven, failure to follow best practices will expose Merrimack to legal liability for future injuries and or losses for knowingly cutting corners by forcing a square peg in a round hole. The lawyers and planners will win. While this Planning Board views this plan only as an advisory document, not as a regulatory document, we should not be suggesting or recommending a flawed plan that falls well short of established best practices and at an unknown cost and unknown funding. This plan best fits high-density congested population centers with limited and costly parking, i.e. cities. Think the Bay section of Boston. Be careful what you wish for unless you want to remake our villages into a city. I predict the result will be an overinvestment and underutilization in walking and biking modes of transportation, increased traffic congestion, and a huge cost to the taxpayers. In summary, this plan does not fit Route 3 in Merrimack. Merrimack's not an urban city. Merrimack is a town of four villages. The only part that makes sense today is to add sidewalks in our villages to support our local businesses, assuming the sidewalk is not in the Route 3 roadway. I would also add to it to gradually add sidewalks for the school areas for the students and children to safely walk to school. I cannot support this plan as it exists today for the above reasons. It fails to meet many best practice standards. I ask the Planning Board to perform a critical analysis using national and state best practices prior to adopting the plan. Let's keep what fits and remove what is not feasible or fall short of best practices. The National Regional Planning Commission DW Highway 2019 Bicycle Pedestrian Transportation Plan is not ready for prime time. We should not be adopting a pipe dream plan that has such obvious flaws and cannot fit in the width of our Route 3 corridor. Merrimack should not be used in this manner to connect Nashua to Bedford. And as I said earlier, I understand that the adoption of the plan is merely as an advisory, but to the layperson, they think that this is what the town intends to do and wants to do, and is giving a false signal to the residents. And I also understand that it's up to the Town Council to put various fundings in the budget. And I do support the budget proposal this coming year for $200,000 for sidewalks. I've already shared that with the Town Manager, because I think it's a move in the right direction, providing we do it in measured, at a measured pace that we can afford on it. And I don't think that, you know, sidewalks should be used for those that want to go to what I would call exercise extremes, like walking from Nashua to Merrimack, or Merrimack to Bedford. Let them join an exercise club, or buy a treadmill and put it in their house or garage if they want to get that much of beneficial exercise. That's a much better way to go. That's a much better way to go. The more people we put near the vehicles, the more we're going to endanger them and create liabilities for the drivers because of the mistakes people make, whether it's the pedestrian on their cellphone, or the driver that's inattentive on it. And I think as we add sidewalks, part of that equation is we have to add crosswalks, which will have a slowing effect on traffic. And depending on how you're going to signal the crosswalk, crosswalks aren't inexpensive to put in. If you had a fancy, urban-style crosswalk with all the electronic signals, you could be spending fifty, a hundred thousand just for the signaling and illumination. So it's not a inexpensive, it's not just painting white stripes on the road across the road and putting a sign or two about a crosswalk. It gets much more expensive much faster. And my last comment would be, as we build sidewalks, we have a responsibility to maintain them, right? For the aesthetics in the town, for the safety of the people walking on them. I'll have to tell you, I'm embarrassed when I look at our sidewalks today, right now. Many of them are not walkable. They haven't had the smaller second and third snowstorm clear off them, or slush from the traffic has been splashed onto them, and they're covered in ice. It's not good, and it's a liability for the town and the taxpayers. And something that's critical, it's just like your walkways around your house, and out your front door to the street. You gotta, you gotta clean them off after every single storm, and if it's an area that receives snow melt, you're going to be sanding and salting it every time you have a thaw and refreeze. And I'm not sure, you know, the Department of Public Works understands the responsibility they're going to have for the sidewalks to do it right. And I'll close just by saying, if we're going to do something, we should do it right, and if we're not going to do it right, we shouldn't do it at all. That's the cardinal rule. Do it right, do it right the first time. So bear in mind, as we build out sidewalks, it's going to increase the maintenance expense, and we're going to have a small department in the Department of Public Works that's going to be basically the sidewalk staff dedicated to sidewalks on it. It's just, you know, fact of life, living in northern climate. This isn't Florida or Georgia. So thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Mr. Niles, for your comments. Any members of the board have any discussion items for Mr. Niles based on his comments? Thank you very much for your input. I'm glad that you come out. My enthusiasm for people being civically engaged isn't just limited to the young people or people who agree with me. I want everybody to be engaged and come and have their opinions on these things.
Thank you. I appreciate your receptivity. I do, as you can tell, feel enthusiastic about the topic, because I think this is important to town of Merrimack. You know, in general, and I've lived in town for forty-plus years, the, you know, the amount of traffic congestion we have in town today is awful, and my fear is it could get worse. And as a town, we need to find ways to make it better, not worse, and we don't know yet, you know, it's nice that we got some tolls lifted in town, long overdue, of course, but I'm not sure if that's going to have a beneficial effect on the traffic that we see stacking up and down the corridor in the morning and evening rush hours. So time will tell. But I think that, you know, we need to approach it properly and do what's best for Merrimack, not what people outside of Merrimack think is best for Merrimack. We know best. We live here every day. We know what's best for Merrimack, not someone in Concord or in California or wherever. It's us, the residents in Merrimack. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Niles, for your comments. Any other abutters or citizens who wish to weigh in? Okay. Then we'll close the public hearing, and that leaves it for the board to have some discussion about what it will do. Is there any discussion from members of the board? Nelson?
Well, I was going to recommend that the board adopt the plan. After hearing that, I think Mr. Niles has some points, but he missed a few points in his analysis here, and this commits no money, and we're doing, in some ways, what he suggested doing, that is, we're going about this a little piece at a time. This is an overall plan that addresses the whole town, and we'll, as Bill pointed out, the council has decided to do a little bite at a time and get some of our critical areas sidewalked, and I think we should go ahead and do that plan, and that's what I believe this plan recommends.
Thank you for the comment, Nelson. Is it, you began with a motion? Is that?
Oh, I can certainly turn.
I mean, you don't have to. I just thought that you did.
I didn't know. I can do that. I didn't know if fellow leaders wanted to talk. I will move that we adopt this plan of the, for the sidewalk.
To adopt as an appendix to the 2013 master plan.
Thank you very much.
Is there a second for Nelson's motion? I'll second the motion if nobody else will, for the adoption of the pedestrian plan. I appreciate Mr. Niles' comments and the clear amount of time and work that he spent researching these issues. We've all been along for the ride, well, not all of us, but those that have been on the board since 2013, and then for the rest of us, at whatever point you joined along, as we've tackled these exact issues. And I know that it may seem that, you know, there's questions left unanswered or unsaid, but I promise you, every single one of these issues has been discussed with NRPC along the way, and various other consultants that have helped us with these things, and that's why I'm satisfied with it, and not only second, but support the adoption of the plan.
The thing I just will add as the staff to the board, think of this as the thirty-thousand-foot view of the corridor. The details and a lot of the information Mr. Niles is seeking is when you actually get into funding and implementation of the plan. That's where a lot of those questions get studied in detail. At this level, it's, you don't spend that amount of time and effort at this level. It's in the nitty-gritty at the actual project level, I think.
I agree with that, and I think that you actually can't do the detailed engineering of sidewalks along miles of roadway that you may never decide that you want to build them. As they come forward, we have a public works department who examines a need and makes a proposal to the town council and prices out a project, and then there's a vote on that, and you decide, you know, one step at a time. And that's how the engineering gets done for these things. Engineering the sidewalks for eleven miles from Bedford to Nashua, just as a matter of the preliminary part of the plan, would be more money than we'd ever plan on spending on building sidewalks just to do an engineering plan for things that would never get built.
Mr. Chairman, I would only make one other comment. Having looked in detail at the plan for widening the FE Everett Turnpike from Nashua to Manchester, I shudder at what it's going to do to the Route Three corridor while they're doing it. And so as long as we don't overlook that anything we do has got to recognize that for three, four, ten, I don't know many years, we're going to be faced with extra traffic on Route Three simply because DOT widening of Everett Turnpike, and that's all I draw to people's attention, I do worry what's going to happen until the FE Everett Turnpike is three lanes.
I have a more positive view of that, having sort of watched Ninety-three down to the Massachusetts border get widened, and it was a mess for a long time.
It still is a bloody mess.
But everybody stays on Ninety-three and travels down there and doesn't look for alternate routes or crowd the ground-level roads, because for whatever it is, it's still the best way to get to Massachusetts. It's not like you're going to find a ground-level road. Now, Route Three does run parallel to the Turnpike, but they always manage to figure out ways to route a couple of lanes that stay open, which is basically what we have now. They move them back and forth, and you drive through some cones, but those two lanes will stay open and clear. In addition to which, with the ordinary traffic that's on Route Three, it's very rare that in a traffic situation on the Turnpike, it's going to be faster to get off of it and go down Route Three, which really isn't. The elimination of the tolls at Exit Eleven mean nothing for Route Three traffic. There wasn't any Route Three traffic that was impeded by tolls between the Common Man and North, because the tolls don't face that direction, at least since the Route Twelve, the Exit Twelve tolls went away. So it doesn't really help any of that, but that was never part of the puzzle for me. Again, the bikes and the pedestrians are there already. It's a matter of whether you get them out of the road or leave them in the road, and those decisions will be made as they go through. Anyway, enough of that. I support adoption of the plan. Does anyone else have any comments? Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm one of those five percent. I ride a bike, I run. I can honestly say that I've ran DW Highway from the Nashua and Merrimack line to the Bedford-Merrimack line. I'm cognizant of the fact of what Mr. Millen said regarding the expansion of the FE Everett Turnpike. I think the expansion of the FE Everett Turnpike is much narrower in terms of land than what Ninety-three is. I think to compare the widening of Ninety-three to FE Everett is not a good analogy, respectfully, Mr. Chairman, not even close. The impact that that Turnpike expansion is going to have on our community is huge. It is large. It is voluminous. And I really think it's premature to incorporate what NRPC has done as an amendment to the master plan without getting to our master plan period. So I'm opposed strictly from a process standpoint. I would rather have this community participate in the master plan and work with the NRPC document, and be able to develop their own language, which is what they feel is an appropriate pedestrian corridor for Route Three, because it stands right now, when you looked at the, when you looked at the bikeability component in the NRPC thing, there were no greens, there were no yellows, it was all orange and red, and I'll admit that. I take a risk every day with riding, you know, riding my bike in the good weather, going up and down DW Highway, Chopper Road, Bedford Road, I take a risk because there's really no safe place for me to bike, which is why when you go to the town lines, you've got signs that are there that tell people that are driving that you got to give three feet to any bicyclists that you see on the road. Okay? Whether or not they're paying attention to that when they're driving down the road is a totally different story, but at least there are signs at the town lines that tell you that you got to give three feet to that particulars, to the bicyclists, to make sure that they have, they have the right to the road. The real value is the walkways, the sidewalks, and this is what this board has been arguing for, for, since I've been a part of this community for well over fifteen years now. And I think to do it right, to behoove the board, to put, to put the work that the NRPC has done, to put the work that you folks have done, before, before the people that are going to participate in the master plan review in twenty twenty-two. I mean, we're already, we've already allocated money to community development. We're beginning to think about the 2023 master plan update. I don't see why there's a rush to incorporate this plan as an amendment. It's the reason why I asked him for this information. Have we ever amended our master plan? We did it once, and to be very candid with you, it was cleanup work, because it was six months later. We're not talking six years later, we're talking six months later. So there's never been a desire in this community to add anything substantive to a master plan, because once the master plan has been done, outside of maybe fixing the I's and fixing the T's on there, you've actually arrived at a document that this community has embraced. I don't see why you need to amend it full fold right now, because you've, because you've gotten a report from NRPC, and you want to appendicize it to include the master plan. I would say, take it to the community, get the community to buy in on this particular plan, and the best way to do is during the master plan update coming in the next couple of years. To me, that's, that's the best value, because at the end, at the end of the, the end of the day right now, bikes, bikeability in Merrimack is going to be very difficult. You're not going to be able to create bike lanes like you have in other communities. Council, from a policy perspective, we've begun to take the steps to allocate the monies towards creating, creating sidewalks so that we can make our town center to be walkable, and hopefully at some particular point, we will get out to the, to the middle school. I don't know if that's going to happen five or fifteen years from now, but, you know, the plan, the planning is there. So I don't see why there's a rush by this, by this body to amend the master plan and slap this on there, when quite honestly, I think there's, there's a community of twenty-eight thousand people that would like to participate in the master plan process, be able to look at this, weigh in on this, and be able to incorporate their own language. We should be using our own language as to what we feel is walkability in Merrimack, not what the NRPC is. And I serve, I serve on the NRPC. I'm a commissioner, and I appreciate the value that the NRPC provides to this community, but I would rather see this board, I'd rather see this community put their fingerprints on a, on a, on a pedestrian plan, on, on walkability in this community that makes sense for Merrimack, not just, not just because the NRPC has made some good recommendations. Use our own language, get buy-in from the, from the community on this, and I would respect. The best way to get buy-in is the upcoming master plan process. It is appropriate, it is deliberate, and it's the right time to have that conversation.
Just to correct, when I have the master plan and the CIP, it's year six, so it's six years out, not three years out. I.
And then you begin in year six and do it for two more years.
Okay, so I apologize for the timeframe, but I still make the same argument, that this should be a part of the master plan process.
I appreciate your comment.
It should not be an amendment done at, done at a board level with one person sitting here.
So the, thank you for your comment. Let me, let me provide my thoughts.
Just one caveat, Mr. Chairman, I speak for myself as a counselor. I have no idea how my other counselors feel about, about this. So I just wonder, my opinions are my alone.
Fair enough. Our 2013 master plan had in it an objective of adopting a town-wide pedestrian and bicycle master plan, and so this doesn't come out of the blue. It wasn't left out of the old master plan process. That process of developing the master plan from 2013 began in 2011, and it called for a DW Highway master plan, a bike and pedestrian master plan. The concepts and the roots of what are ultimately in this master plan existed as far back as then, and that's ten, eleven years ago. And the notion that looking forward five or six years to begin the next master plan and then spending two years doing it would mean that we'd be eight years from now trying to go through that process. I think it's embarrassing to think that that's rushed. I mean, it's just, it's not. It's been 2013.
Just to supplement what you're saying, Mr. Chairman, on page two-hundred-and-twelve, under the table of recommendations for transportation.
You just pull that off the top of your hat, page two-hundred-and-twelve.
No, he's digging through it.
I'm kind of ready. Under transportation recommendations, T3, continue to develop a town-wide pedestrian and bicycle plan, was recommended to be in a one-to-two-year timeframe with Community Development, Planning Board, and Town Council.
From 2013, so we're actually.
Excuse me, I take that back. Planning Board, Public Works, and.
So you've, you've got your plan, but where does it say that it needs to be, it should be incorporated in the master plan? There's no language in there that says that.
There is not, and.
So you've accomplished the goal, you've got a plan.
And if I, when I presented this back in October to the board, I presented two alternatives. One, adopt it as an amendment to the 2013 master plan. Two, adopt it as a standalone policy document that the planning board just adopts. The option that the board chose that night was to adopt it as an amendment, an appendix to the master plan, which I know it hasn't happened here since I've been here, but I've had at least four or five different amendments to master plans during my time in Londonderry, where we did additional planning documents that became appendices to the master plan after they were completed.
And they're consistent with the master plan and in accordance with the master plan the way we laid it out.
I think the other part to consider with this is, I know, Bill, you're looking at the idea that using some local language or putting things in our terms, I don't think that the process we went through reflects the notion that the NRPC handed us some language that we bought into. It was a very cooperative process back and forth with them.
I'm not saying that, because I was here for when they, when they made that presentation, Mr. Chairman. Very grateful for the testimony that was given that night. I just, I just feel, we have a report, you want to amend the master plan. I oppose it on procedural grounds, strictly procedural, not that I disagree with the philosophical piece of it from a, from a procedural standpoint. I look at the master plan as a governing document for this community, as a philosophy, as to where we want to be ten years down the road. I think if, if the board really believes in what the NRPC does, has done, then the buy-in should be during the master plan process, not at, not at, not at ten past nine on a, on a Tuesday night.
Well, that's, that's not really fair, Bill, to say ten past nine on a Tuesday night.
Well, I'm sorry if you think it's fair or not, or unfair, Mr. Chairman.
This process has been going on since Desiree sat on the board and chaired the Bike Pedestrian Subcommittee of this board, and had hearing after hearing, sought input from everywhere we could, including the forum, including some surveys, which I understand some people which I understand some people can be critical of a survey. But there's more input from that survey than there was for the main master plan. There was a lot of people involved, and the opportunity to be involved has been wide open for six years. The language has been looked at, the maps have been looked at. They've been displayed at elections, they've been posted online. I think they've been published in the paper. The idea that this is somehow 10 past nine, that we're somehow sneaking something through, is just offensive.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman. I'm just saying, this needs to be vetted to the community. Okay, you feel that it's been vetted. I personally do not think it's been vetted. Okay? And I apologize if you feel insulted, Mr. Chairman, because it's the last thing that I would do, because I hold you in high regard.
I don't have any objection to the idea that more people, I would love to have everybody come in and offer as much input as possible. You know, as we've gone through these processes with the master plan itself, we always sit around the room saying, why with 29,000 people in town are there 10, 12, 14? I think we had 40 in a kickoff meeting once, and it was amazing. But it was one. And it was a struggle after that to, you know, find just participation in the master plan. Now, is there, what do you do to remedy that? There's a million different kinds of solutions. We actually had meetings about just that subject. How do we get more input on this bike plan? Where do we do it? That's how we ended up surveying at elections. And even if people didn't answer the survey, they at least walked past an opportunity to do so.
I don't disagree with you on that, Mr. Chairman.
On some level, you can lead a horse to water. We talk about this in an open hearing with a public agenda, the same way the town council does. And 29,000 people don't show up for your decisions at town council either. I mean, you have a handful of people who are interested, and some come in and say so.
Or they're watching it on cable access.
Yeah, absolutely. With that in mind, I, thank you for your comments. I appreciate the idea that the process has always got room to be a little different. I think that we've done a yeoman's job of getting this information out, circulating to the community, and having people consider it. The language isn't sort of handed to us from, you know, elsewhere, wherever that be. And I don't remember who said it at different points tonight, but I've heard everything from Nashville to California providing us feedback on where sidewalks ought to be. And this is not the case, where this information came from. This was very much hours and hours and hours of time. I mean, Desiree hasn't been on this board for three years, I don't think.
Desiree's effort was basically stopped at a council meeting, and then this was the remnants of what happened two years after that.
Yeah, kind of got restarted after that. Yeah, minds had changed, and there'd been a lot of discussion, a lot of consideration from folks. The other part of that is, as I've watched it years ago, I quit Facebook over a year ago, but when I did watch Facebook and see these comments, there are certainly people that worry about the tax dollars and where they go. And the town council attends to our tax dollars with great attention. But generally, other than that question, there's a lot of support for doing some sidewalks around the middle of town, webbing out, following these plans, picking the priorities, as the town center committee did, picking the priorities as were identified on those surveys, hearing from students like this, hearing from ones who say, "Oh, Gera Drive and some others ought to be considered as well." You can't sort of put your survey finger in the air and say you got, you know, two of these responses for every one of those responses. But I've clearly heard a lot of support for the sidewalks and the sidewalk plan that have been proposed.
This has nothing to do with my support of or not supporting sidewalks. This is about process, Mr. Chairman.
Understood.
Just to be clear.
Does anyone else have some discussion of this before we? We have a motion and a second to adopt the plan. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Two opposed. Counselor Boyd and Mr. Millens are opposed. That is a 5-2-0 vote to adopt the amendment to the master plan. Thank you for the vigorous discussion. I think any process improved by some dissent. Next item on our agenda is Item 6, Workshop Discussion for Various Potential Zoning Ordinance Amendments, including definitions, non-conforming lots, signs, and telecommunications towers. Tim, what have you?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm with the board. In your packet, you'll find a memo dated January 14th from me. This is essentially the same memo that I had presented to the board back in November, when we only had a bare quorum of four people here that night. There have been a couple of things that have been changed and added to this in the course of staff's continued review, which have been added in italics in the outline here. It's become clear to my staff and I that there are several sections of the zoning ordinance that need to be addressed with small modifications to address things like administration, enforcement of different provisions, and just simply modernizing several minor areas. We're not looking at doing anything to overhaul or change the direction of our zoning. What we're looking to do here is simply make sure that our ordinance can be administered and enforced properly as we move forward before any larger-scale rezoning efforts take place. So if the board is comfortable and wants to go through the various sections, what we're proposing, I can certainly do that. Or if you just want to ask specific questions, if you've had a chance to review it in advance, I'm open to either way. Ultimately, what I'd like to leave here tonight with is an understanding and schedule as to how we want to proceed forward with public hearings. Because this is a zoning ordinance amendment, these would need to go to the town council. So the process would be public hearing, recommendation from Planning Board. We would then go to the council for a first read, public hearing, second read, third read adoption in that process. So just trying to game plan, hopefully, following budget season, when we would get this in front of the council, because I certainly don't want to overload the council members during budget season as much as I can, given their calendar and workload at this time of year.
What's the will of the board? Do you want Tim to review this with us, Sari Adam? Or do you want to tackle it with your questions and answers?
Either way, I've got a few questions, but most of it is very straightforward. As Tim says, it's practically
Yeah, there's a lot of housekeeping.
A lot of housekeeping stuff, and
The only thing that's really been changed in any significant manner is the telecommunications section. And that's ultimately actually from a request I've had for several years from Counselor Boyd to take a look at that section. So given some of the changes in state law and federal law, I thought it made sense to try to tweak some of that language around to make our process more legal, so to speak.
That's the area I had the most problem with. Because I didn't really understand enough about the new technology and the needs for some of these things that have been put in here.
Sure.
And maybe you can give us a tutorial that will make that easier, or we can go
All right, I'll give you the 50 cent version of what we're proposing to do with the wireless telecommunications section. Number one, right now, it's spread out over various different sections of the ordinance, which makes it very difficult to administer. So first part is get it into one separate section with references from the different various districts that we have. Number two is to change the process such that, rather than using special exceptions with the zoning board for items in the residential districts, because the types of questions and issues that usually come up with telecommunications towers seem to be more Planning Board germane than typically the zoning board is equipped to handle, I'm proposing that we change those from special exceptions to conditional use permits with the Planning Board. And then finally, what we're looking to do here is, A, take the changes and updates that have happened to RSA 12K, which is the state's laws regarding personal wireless communication facilities, and make sure that we are consistent with those definitions and processes. For example, we are no longer permitted under state law to require a bond for the removal of a tower unless we require a bond for every type of thing that we would approve as a Planning Board. So unless we're going to require a bond to remove an industrial building when they're done using it, we can't require a bond for a cell tower. Other than that, a lot of it is simply adding a couple of things. I know that one of Counselor Boyd's comments, going back a couple of years, is the fact that the town never had a height requirement on these particular towers. So I've tried to use some of the best practices in my experience. For those that don't know, this kind of has been my specialty since college. I wrote the state's first telecommunications ordinance in 1996 for the town of Londonderry when I was an intern. It was the topic of my undergraduate thesis in college, which I won awards for. I've spoken at conferences throughout this part of the country and the Midwest on the topic. So it's something that I've been familiar with for over 25 years. So I feel very comfortable with the topic area. And again, it's making sure that we're consistent with all the changing rules of the FCC and the state. That's ultimately what I'm trying to do here.
So how does height work?
Essentially, the only time we're talking about new tower and where you need a conditional use permit, which is typically in the residential districts, we're looking at 120-foot maximum height, which, again, I'm basing that off of not only similar communities, but also looking at the towers that have been approved in the community over the last several years. I can only think of one that was any greater than 120 to 125 feet in height. So that seemed to be a reasonable height to look for for the community. And then when we were looking at the evaluation, we put in some criteria for the town, the Planning Board to look at as to whether or not it would be an appropriate location, talking about camouflaging the design, camouflaging the tower, which we currently require, making sure that it's not unreasonably impairing the view from anything that's determined to be historic or significantly a view corridor, and then demonstrating that, again, structurally, it's sound and can accommodate co-location per the new state law. The other thing that's important to recognize, that I'm not sure the board is aware of, under state law now, you can actually increase the tower height by 10 feet without the requirement to come to the Planning Board. It's simply a building permit. Because that's considered a non-substantial modification and is simply covered by a building permit.
Thank you for kind of
You're kidding.
That's been in effect for over two years.
With respect to the
And that's another reason to start at 120, so we don't go too high beyond that 10 feet.
Okay, now I get that, that makes sense. Okay.
That's another rationale for that.
Many of these requirements seem to be in the nature of site plan-type things that we're putting into a zoning ordinance. And I guess there's a reason for dividing things that way. Usually zoning ordinances are a little more limited in terms of place and zones and uses. And all of the fences around them and all that kind of thing fall into site plan review. And I don't know if I have any strong feelings, one way or another, about the choice of one place or another, or whether it makes sense to divide them up into, this is covered in the zoning ordinance and this is covered in the site plan.
We do have a new section in our site plan regulations that deals with issues beyond this that we adopted recently back in our September update to the regulations. So this is complementary to what we have in the site plan regulations.
So because these are part of a zoning ordinance, if we wanted to have a waiver of the six-foot fence and say that on this particular site you can't, that would be a variance.
Unless it's covered by a conditional use permit, which you would then have the ability to waive.
You know, we've gotten an occasional plan proposal for personal wireless facilities, and they're not overly common, but we've had three, maybe.
In the last couple of years, we've had three. And not including the one that did not, actually, that does include the one on drop, but that did not move forward.
I can think of the one on the Water Tower, the one at Home Depot, and the one
On Wilson Hill.
On Wilson Hill Road.
Home Depot predates me, but the other two have been since I've been here.
I think there was another one in that same area of Penna Chuck Square that was proposed.
That predates me as well.
It never came.
Never came.
It never came.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Just the Home Depot one.
Anyway.
So that's the 50 cent explanation as to what we're doing with wireless and the rationale behind it.
Well, thank you.
Do you have a comfort level with how the workload's divided between zoning and zoning board and variances versus Planning Board and conditional use permits or site plan review?
Yeah, it's frankly my preference that the Planning Board handle. It's not that I don't think the zoning board is capable of handing them, but there's so much overlap of what the zoning board gets into with a special exception for a cell tower that I think is more germane to the Planning Board and a site plan review that I thought it made sense to bring the entire process to the Planning Board.
When we take up various decisions that we can be flexible on under a conditional use permit, does that apply the same standard that we would use for waiving site plan regulation with the conditions of the property in substantial relation to the meaning and intent of the regulation?
There are actually specific criteria listed, for example, let me find a page here. On page 2-38, our E wireless communication facilities has permitted uses under the following circumstances, R, C1, and C2. Basically, it would need to meet the four criteria below, rather than the special exception criteria from the zoning ordinance. It would be those four criteria listed under that section.
Okay. Other comments or questions? Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tim, thank you for the, this was great reading. I was really excited. I want to thank it all over, reread it again. I may have some follow-up questions. The one thing, if we could turn, please, to page 4-2 regarding travel trailers.
Yes.
Who's going to enforce, question mark?
That would be my department, the Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Do we differentiate between a travel trailer and a pre-vault motorhome?
We don't now, which is why this section is being put together.
So you're going to consider a pre-vault motorhome to be a travel trailer?
Let me read the language that Robert put together.
Because it doesn't, to me, a travel trailer is a fifth wheel.
A travel trailer doesn't move under its own power.
Correct, correct, which is why I'm asking the question.
Let me go back to the definition. I think Robert added one.
What page is that?
4-2.
Oh, 4-2.
Go back to page 1-9, which is the definition of travel trailer.
Okay.
Which would be a mobile
You know, I don't read definitions, I go right to the law. I apologize.
The new definition would be a mobile home without a permanent foundation primarily designed to be used for temporary occupancy for travel, recreation of vehicle use, or vacation use. The terms camper and recreational vehicle shall have the same meaning.
So the two trailers that I have on my premises, both are meant for utility.
Correct.
I'm going to be good?
Yes.
Even though one houses dogs?
Yes.
That's not
You are not going to be in violation based on the definition.
Even though some might classify the dog houses as an RV for dogs, it'll
This is true.
Okay, fair enough.
Might just file some service requests, because you wouldn't be the first.
It's because I want to.
After the previous debate that you and I had, I would not put that past you, Mr. Chairman.
I am not that vindictive, I don't keep score.
Mr. Chairman, it was tongue-in-cheek.
Understood. Thank you for that. Other comments or questions about the proposed
Can I follow up with the travel trailer? So I guess the question I would ask with Tim, are there other communities that have similar language that you've proposed? Have you had any, I don't know, with the community development listserv or anything to that effect regarding
Nothing that I can recall. I know this was a particular section that Robert had put together based on several service requests we've had, which we just haven't been able to enforce because we haven't had language in the ordinance that allows us to say, you can't use a travel trailer as a second living unit on a single-family property.
So what if you have the snowbirds that come to visit their grandkids, and they're there for a couple of months? I mean, that's
That's something that we would certainly not consider to be permanent use. It's the permanency that really becomes, we've had, I don't recall the specific address, nor would I probably want to share it in a public forum like this. We've had at least one or two properties where the trailer has been on the property for a multitude of years, which we have not been able to enforce.
This regulation allows a guest for 30 days in a year, approved by the Planning and Zoning Administrator.
There was a case
It was a case, and I can't remember how it worked.
There was a case, town of Belmont. Belmont or Gilmington, a couple of months ago.
It was Gilmington.
It was Gilmington.
Gilmington, thank you. That somebody was living in a trailer on their, on, adjacent to, the house was torn down, but it was still a garage, and he was, and the town took him to court, and the town...
And won.
The town won. Which I thought was found.
That was permanent.
The funny thing is, it was, it was his property.
Yeah, but it was permanent.
It was permanent, correct.
The case that I was thinking of was not recent, so it was a little bit before. And although I think my memory is the town prevailed in that as well, prevailing at the Supreme Court is not the objective because of all the legal expenses that it takes to get there. Having a clearly-written ordinance that is enforceable by much lower levels of review is the way to go.
Ultimately, what we're trying to do.
Going back to Bill's question about the motorhome.
Correct.
And somebody said it doesn't move on its own. Looking at this definition...
I think I was wrong, yeah.
It says recreational vehicle, an RV. So, yes, the big bus style moves on its own is...
A travel trailer.
Is a travel trailer.
So, we're basically seeing any, any standalone vehicle, whether it has an engine or not, that has a bed, a toilet...
Yep.
High-def TV.
That's what this says.
Yeah.
Well, in the general concept of that is that a proper dwelling unit got a certificate of occupancy and building permits and was built to code.
Especially in the situation where in a septic system where you're...
Yeah, every, everything else in any of these configurations is something other than that which has its place, but not as a permanent dwelling unit. I think is the intent for all of this stuff.
But this doesn't preclude me from putting my boat in my backyard.
Nope, just don't live in it. You can put your camper in your backyard, just don't live in it.
I can, it doesn't say I can't.
Don't give people ideas.
If you want to live in your boat under its canvas color and the temperature that's going to be tonight, I bless you.
I've got the...
Some boats are nice, better accommodations than campers.
It's true, true.
And some people don't put them in the back.
My father-in-law has a slip at the DYC down in Boston. There are people that live there year-round on their boat.
Yep.
And they're absolutely comfortable.
Yep, they are.
Anyway, other comments or questions about the proposed regular, ordinance, zoning ordinance? Tim, I know at the beginning of this you were sort of looking for some direction as to next steps and all of that. You got some guidance for us as to what you think you might recommend?
Ultimately, I think there's, there's two tacks we can take here. If everybody seems comfortable with the general direction here, we can move right to a public hearing and recommendation to council. If you want to go into more detail, we can do another workshop and specifically look at specific sections that you have concerns about. But I was hoping that tonight would serve that purpose and that next step would be...
I think we go forward.
I'm inclined to go forward, I think I like the changes that you've made. Plus, we've got a full attendance here, which it seems to be a rare, relatively full attendance for us. Bill, you had a comment?
Just, it was actually regarding the work that Tim, that Tim did. I noticed that there's language in there regarding, regarding billboards in effect of 150 feet. So, if somebody owns a business and they put up a sign that's more than 150 feet, you're going to treat that as a billboard, not as a sign. Am I reading that right?
That's, again, that's Robert's language, not mine.
What section is that?
I will get to that, Mr. Chairman. It is the next page, 17-2, section 1705, number four, under definitions. For this purpose of the ordinance, an off-premise sign becomes a billboard when it's greater than 150 feet in size.
When it's off-premise.
Off-premise.
Off-premise is the key word there.
So, I'm confused. Off-premise means...
Not on the same property where the business it's advertising is located.
So, my roofing company is on DW Highway, and I advertise my roofing sign on Joppa Road. That's considered off-premise?
Yes.
Then, anything less than 150 feet is kosher, anything 150...
No, it's only considered a billboard when it's over 100. There's separate requirements for billboards than there are for regular signs. We're not, we're not allowing off-premise signs of, less than 150.
Well, that's what I'm getting at.
This is simply just a clarification to the billboard requirements.
Other comments or questions? Nelson?
Page 2-8, there was a listing on home occupations.
Yep.
And home occupations on C, this is home occupations C. Home occupations are deemed to include blah, 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 blah. Firearms-related uses is one of the things that's in there.
Yep, it is.
Was that in there before?
It was not, but we've seen so many of them.
We've got so many.
We are now requiring that those particular types of things, regardless of whether they meet the criteria that says you can do it without the planning board, will have to come to the planning board. That would be under...
Last letter in that one.
I thought these were...
11, on the next page.
Yep, on page number 11.
Are we saying that this home occupation is permitted without any...
No.
No.
That's why we're, we added that language so we could specifically say, if you're doing a firearm-related home occupation, you must come to the planning board. You do not get the ability to just do it.
That's what I wanted, but I read it wrong.
Alistair and I were here a couple, couple years, when I first came back to the planning board, which was...
Mr. Maliar.
Mr., thank you.
Thank you.
And...
And Mr. Bevel.
And that was just a very, well, I wasn't here for the, for the Bevel petition, but the other one I was. And the requirements, there was like, like a certain set of criteria. You meet that criteria, you got your home occupancy permit. So, that's probably the genesis of why it's being...
Correct, we wanted to basically clean up the home occupation section in general because the way it was written technically, the planning board didn't have the ability to really do what the ordinance was telling us you had to do because the planning board's unable to handle site plan subdivisions, conditional use permits. There is no such thing as a home occupation approval anywhere in statute. So, we needed to clean that language up and come up with the proper processes to make sure that if we ever get challenged on the grounds of one of these, again, we're going to be legal.
I guess the question I would have philosophically is, does the planning board really want to be handling, you know, a higher level of examination as it relates to somebody that wants to work out of their home?
Ninety, ninety percent of them, we don't. It's only when you become a Level 2 that it comes to the planning board.
This regulation, for the first time, creates an administrative process to approve home occupations.
We've had one, it's just, it was too open. We wanted to close some of those loopholes.
In the past, every time someone wants to...
So, it doesn't necessarily have to come to us.
Correct.
No.
Anything listed...
All the firearms always will.
If you meet the criteria under E, you don't have to come to the planning board. If you have, if you don't, if you do not meet any of those, then it's, you go become a Level 2 and you're subject to item F.
And Level 2 are those people that don't meet the criteria in section E.
Correct.
At any point. They could have 450 square feet, meet all the other criteria, because they have 450 feet, they got to go to the... It's a Level 2.
550, but...
Well, I, fuzzy mouth, I appreciate the correction.
Over 500, but yeah. If they, if they step out of, of any of those requirements and they got to come to the planning board, and then we can consider it and decide what to do with it. But even then, there's criteria at the top of page 2-10.
We've now turned it into a conditional use permit approval.
Okay, I'm still not 100% clear. I got to read this some more, but...
I will make sure that I'll have a thorough presentation of each section by section when we do the public hearing.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to catch that one.
Sure.
I saw a problem coming.
No, it's, it's ultimately, it's to prevent a firearm dealer or a gunsmith or any of those types of occupations, which traditionally the board has handled as home occupations and granted several approvals to. It's to prevent them from falling in the loophole if they meet that narrow criteria, if they don't have an employee other than family members, and they, then they don't even have to notify. It's just a matter of an administrative approval under the current regulations. So, we want to clean that up and make sure that we, all firearms-related home occupations are dealt with here.
That's the way we need to do it, yeah.
I mean, that's ultimately, I think...
At least it's one choice.
Ultimately, I think that's the direction we...
Neighbors wouldn't even know it was there if they didn't tell them.
Ultimately, I think that's the direction we got from the Superior Court. It wasn't specifically written that way, but I've always interpreted the Superior Court decision in the Maliar-Bevel case to say that because we went through the process we did, that's why the approval was legitimate. So, I think that's why I wanted to get this language cleaned up. And I have a, an unfortunate anecdote. We have a resident who happens to be a state trooper who would like to do firearm dealing to some of his other fellow law enforcement officers. He unfortunately, because of the interpretation I've made of that decision, I've told him he needs to come to the planning board. He lives in a cluster development, and he's abutting the common land, which means he has to notify so many abutters that his abutters fee would be over $1,700. And I don't have a way around that, unfortunately.
We should, not related to this regulation, but I've, we've encountered those where the abutter is an apartment or a condo, and you have to notify all the people that live in them, and you get these crazy $1,700 abutter fees. And I know that it's been many years ago, but I thought we had some process for limiting the notification to the management association.
If there is one.
If there is one.
And, well, by statute, they're required to have one. They may not...
Not in a cluster, the clust...
No, not in a cluster, but in a condo.
In a condo, absolutely. And we actually had a case where an applicant before the zoning board actually made that case to us, and after reviewing it with the town attorney, we were able to have him just notify the management company. In this particular case, because the common land is owned fractionally by all the property owners, there was no other way around it.
And I know that with the condos, one of the headaches is sometimes even though they are required to have one, they don't. And we probably ought to consider in our ordinances requiring some registration of the condo owners for all of the condos in town.
You see that, especially with 240-inch condos.
Yeah.
True.
They have one, but it's non-functional.
As long as they've got an address for notification purposes, anyway.
So, if we are looking at direction of not having another workshop, go right to public hearing, I am going to make a request that, because typically I am not at planning board meetings during budget season, tonight's kind of a rare thing for me to come to a planning board meeting during budget season, that we look at holding the public hearing either March 3 or March 17, which would be right around when deliberative is happening, so that it would follow budget season.
Whatever you think.
March 3 is the school district deliberative session.
Okay, so we maybe don't want to have a meeting that night.
So, I have said, you know...
We've traditionally held it anyway, in the times that we have conflict.
Somebody that has a microphone on, Lyndia, is there something?
I don't. I'm just saying it's something to be considered that the 3rd...
Yeah, I would, in that case, I would look at this, just to make sure we have full attendance, I'd look at the 17th if we were to do it that way.
Aim for the 17th and also with respect to the 3rd. Unless there's some overwhelming need because of urgent projects or applicants who need something, let's try to avoid that meeting if we can.
Sure. I won't be here either way.
I, you know, it doesn't necessarily split my attention, and I want to make sure that we're providing service to applicants who have the need. But if there's, you know, choices that are easily flexed one way or another. Bill?
Mr. Chairman, is it possible to dedicate a presentation before we go to public hearing? And the only thing about this, because of the changes that are being proposed by the Community Development Director, I think it rises to a level of having a, at least from where I sit, for me, I would benefit from having just a dedicated presentation on these particular changes so that all of us on the board and people in the community can understand exactly what... And this isn't to denigrate what, what Tim has done, because this is a lot of, a lot of good and hard work on his part, and I really appreciate it. But I think with the three changes I think are significant, potentially can have a potential impact for people in our community, I think it may prove the board to consider just having a standalone agenda item to have a presentation on this, and then follow that up two weeks later with, with the public hearing, just maybe a brief, again, brief overview of the presentation, then open it up to a public hearing. I'm not trying to...
I'm just trying, I'm just trying to manage it from a scheduling standpoint, my staff.
So, Tim, let me ask this, if we're, if we put a public hearing all the way out to March 17, certainly we've got several meetings between now and then. Can one of your staff members provide a PowerPoint?
Robert could probably handle most of it.
In that case, no. We want it to be done by, I think we were wrong, I mean, I'm not saying Bill's wrong to say what he said, but I don't think we should not have it done, my tip.
The reason this item got moved from one of the two December meetings to this meeting was simply because scheduling-wise, I knew I was going to be here. And traditionally, the planning board has always requested me to be here when we're doing zoning.
I think that's important.
Yeah, I agree with that, although I have confidence in Robert. I mean, he's the Planning and Zoning Administrator. Goodness sakes. That complicated an issue.
But I have no issue with doing a full presentation preceding the planning board having their hearing that evening. The reason I, the reason I look at it that way is, the only time we're going to do public notice is when we post the hearing. There will be no public notice for a workshop discussion.
Well, if it's an agenda item, if we put it around...
It'll be just, but there won't be a separate legal notice for a public hearing, separate from our agenda, like is required for a zoning amendment.
I think ultimately, on the, on the night where there's a public hearing, there should be a full presentation of all the guts and details for the benefit of whoever comes. I like the idea of having something before that for anyone who can, can absorb that information and say, I want to make sure I come to the public hearing now that I know what it's about, or I'm all fine, I'm sad, I don't want to do that. I don't want to add extra work, but I thought with the additional time between now and March 17, there could be a chance for Robert to do a presentation one of the nights that he's here.
I still got to get Casey a solo meeting somewhere here, too, because she hasn't had one yet.
Well, I'm sure she can handle PowerPoints as well. Whatever you think. Bill, what works? Developing an ordinance and changing the zoning ordinance is one where, sort of circle back to where we were before, process matters, and everybody being clear on it, this is not something that is, should be lightly taken.
I fully expect that, given the scope of the various sections, that not only am I going to be doing a presentation here, I'll be doing one of the council as well.
Makes sense. I mean, we had a site plan and subdivision regulation that was fairly lengthy, but housekeeping, and I pushed it off to the next meeting because I want everybody to have a chance to absorb it, so...
So, technically, there's two bites at the apple, presentation, public hearing at the planning board, and that's going to come back to the town.
It's going to go to the council for ultimate adoption, so...
Another presentation, another public hearing.
You've got first read, public hearing, second read, and third read, so...
No, no, I can...
So, that's why I think it probably makes sense to do the presentation at the noticed public hearing.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, I'm good.
So, let's shoot for the 17th unless otherwise...
Okay, and then no other interim educational sessions and...
St. Patrick's Day?
It'll be a fun night.
It's a whole day of obligation.
Happy Tuesday. Okay, any other idea, work on this item, Tim? Are you satisfied with our...
I feel I have a direction I need.
Okay. That brings us to item 7, which is discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern. Does anyone have any other items of concern?
I get mine.
Already got yours?
Yeah.
Anybody else? The only item that I would encourage is, we do have a couple of vacant alternate positions, and we could always use some new interested folks. And so, let's use the microphone and the camera to announce to anybody that happens to be watching. If you're interested, come on down and find out more.
And on a similar note, zoning board has the same situation.
No, we don't care about that.
You're full.
We're first.
Zoning board's full. Zoner's full right now.
So, anyone at home that's interested in becoming involved in some of these decisions and discussions, there's opportunity to do so.
The other question, Mr. Chairman, would be directed to Tim. Are we going to have Jamie Emery from Emery &amp; Garrett come to talk to us about salt?
That was the open question I still had, is if... Whether or not you, Bill, whether you felt appropriate that the planning board be invited to do one shot with the council, or if you'd rather...
My, 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 the sense that I got that it's more of a purview of the planning board than the council.
That was the sense I had, too.
I thought we talked about that last time, too, and that was the comment, was that if there is one, then the planning board does it, invites the council if they want to come.
I certainly will be here, because I, I think, and I don't mean to speak for the former chairman, but I think both Nelson and I walked away very enlightened in probably having a more elevated concern about the impact of NACL in our groundwater. So, I think the top, the topic is definitely timely.
Thank you for that comment, Bill. I absolutely agree, and whether it's, no matter who hosts it, I'll be there. If someone wants to make it nice and convenient and put it on a planning board Tuesday, I'll be right here.
I will make arrangements with MVD to get it at one of the upcoming planning board meetings.
Thanks, Tim.
I think we should invite DPW to, even though they already know, I think we, they should hear it again.
Inviting them doesn't hurt.
It doesn't hurt.
I think it doesn't hurt. On some level, when it comes to inviting various town departments, I sort of recognize that they're all part of the agenda system and receive agendas and choose to come to whatever they like. As our fire department does when, when John Manuelli wants to weigh in on something, we don't invite him, he comes. But anyway, invitations don't hurt, I just don't know that they're absolutely necessary.
Yeah, okay.
Any other discussion items, anyone? Seeing none, then the next item on our agenda is the approval or the consideration of the approval the approval of the minutes of January 7, 2020, although our agenda says 2019.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the minutes as submitted.
Is there a second? Second by Nelson, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor approving the minutes of January 7, 2020, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining?
I'll abstain.
Two abstentions, so that is, Paul and Lynn have abstained 5-0-2 to approve the